Yes, yes. Good morning. It is 10 o'clock. And we are ready to start our meeting. We're glad you're here. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance, and it is my turn to lead, so please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll move to public comment. Public comment. Each person giving public comment gets three minutes. We have a little timer box. After two and a half minutes, you'll hear a little beep, and the yellow light will go on, and at three minutes, the red light goes on. There's some other limitations to public comment, but, and those are all spelled out in the agenda. I won't take the time to go over those here. So with that, I will open public comment. Ms. Waller, welcome.
Thank you, Ellie Waller. Barton Hospital Representative Chris Barton provided a presentation to the Kingsbury General Improvement District Tuesday evening. I left very concerned about the Barton team following statements on charts as the environmental assessment review has not been completed and released, and until such time, these are very misleading comments to the public. Charts included: meets all TRPA Tahoe Regional Planning Agency requirements, meets scenic thresholds, meets water filtration and improvement, has reduced traffic. Note: no mention of Douglas County and our zoning text amendment requirements, asking for a height by right and abolishing the need for special use permit currently required never gets stated, and that four stories is all that is allowed in a town center by TRPA code. These and other changes in the proposed new healthcare subdistrict need the Douglas County stamp of approval before TRPA can weigh in. I just want factual information to contend with, and the public deserves correct information. I do completely understand they can present a project, but it needs to be factual. You can understand my constant aggravation with this type of information at different venues. Learning new things is a plus. Mr. Proctor stated: use of 4H Camp Road was off the table. Determination of the road could not meet capacity for the number of cars. Trying to stay off of Laurel Drive, well, that's a good idea. Douglas County proposed the height of 80 feet. It was suggested the increased height was necessary because of groundwater issues that have to be addressed. Competing interests mentioned a few times: more green space, less coverage creates the need for height. Hospital related to tourism as it's the nature of the town. Hundreds of thousands of people to help need a scaled up hospital. There were 25-plus community outreach and partner meetings. Begs the question: who are the partners? Public meetings. One of those was the Tahoe Regional Planning Committee, June 26, 2024, way back when the anticipated approval cycle having TRPA final approval as early as September or October of 2024. Stewards of the environment partnerships and projects stating off-site positive actions while not being able to correct significant surface water runoff onsite. Making a difference: committed to our Lake Tahoe communities. This is not evidence with the proposal of an 85-foot building, or maybe a little less, from an undersized residential, across the street from an undersized residential street that will shadow 15-foot tall homes. Get the picture? A 70-foot height difference. Noise that never existed with ambulance and helicopter arrivals and departures, et cetera, should be okay with the people.
Thank you. Mr. Roldson, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. Well, as you guys know, I'm here to talk about the cell towers before our 4-3 appeals.
Will you please state your name for the record?
Oh, yes, my name is Greg Roldson, Minden Town resident, sorry. Anyways, one final thought for you guys before the appeals process takes place on 4-3. Verizon will be meeting with the school board this afternoon to present a proposal to place a cell tower on or near the high school campus. This is a disturbing development since their previous July 2024 analysis indicated that they rejected the high school on both the stadium lights and both on top of their buildings. This is also particularly concerning when you review the financial impacts to the school district. The school district has been steadily in decline since 1990, where it had approximately 7,200 students. Now, with the 2025 budget, it's going to fall below 5,000 students. When I compared that against the population in Douglas County, the Douglas County population has basically been relatively flat over the last five years, somewhere in the 49,000 area. There's lots of reasons why students or the decline in population of a school district might take place. But for me, it's particularly concerning to why give them one more opportunity or why give parents one more opportunity to think about another alternative, i.e. charter schools, what have you. The Douglas County School District receives $10,598 per student. So when you look at the fact that we're now down, their budget projects us a population of 49, 50 for the 2025 budget, even if you reduce 30 students out of that list because parents get upset and they want another alternative because they fear cell towers, for whatever their reasons may be, that's going to be a decline of over $300,000 to the school district in student funding from state, federal, and local funding. We know that's a possibility because Ally's Daycare Center had 90 parents sign their petitions to say they might pull their students. Even if that was only 50%, that would decimate that business, as you guys know, you've heard this before. I think that the parents' considerations have to be taken into account. I think you have to take into account what might happen at Pinion and also the high school. When you compare that to the measly pittance that Verizon would offer the high school, I'm out of time. Oh, darn it.
Thank you, Mr. Roldson. Welcome, Ms. Roldson. Would you please state your name as you begin?
Hi, I'm Susan Roldson. I've lived in this valley over 30, about 35 years, and I've been a nurse in the area for 35 years. I'm here to talk about that now I'm hearing Verizon wants to put a tower at the high school. I want to remind everybody, I'm a drive this home, 2021. The FCC was sued, and there's still a judgment against them because they did not take into consideration 11,000 pages of health effects that were presented to them from around the world and the biological effects that could possibly happen. I know we can't talk health effects, but this is important that you know this. The high school is only a few hundred feet from Ally's Daycare, so really, what are we gaining by putting it at the high school? We have done the work, we have paid the money, and we have hired an RF specialist. He's number one in the country, Kent Chamberlain. He has mapped our whole valley of Minden out. He found multiple safe places to put these towers. Remember, a cell tower can transmit for 20 to 25 to 30 miles if unobstructed. So these sites he's picking will work and help near the high school and the worried parents that their kids can't get their calls. We, when they looked at our valley, they called it an unobstructed view because we don't have mountains in between. We're a wide-open valley. The FCC Communications has total immunity. As a nurse, I cannot understand this. Every single nurse's note I did for 45 years was a legal document. I couldn't erase it, I couldn't change it. And many nurses were called into court because of our notes. How can they have total immunity with your health? I just, I can't understand it. The day I retired, I didn't walk out and go, oh, goodie, I can eat bonbons now on my couch. I wasn't thinking about going to Hawaii. I took a deep breath and I said, oh, my God, I did it. 45 years, and I caused no harm. I, that was so important to me ethically, and I worked in this valley, and I took good care of your family and your friends that came into our local ERs. I'm asking you guys, please, err on the side of caution, as I did, taking care of your family and friends. Please don't put a tower at Station 14, the high school, and Pinion Hills. Also, that area by the high school, since we moved in, they've put in a fire station around about. We have double the high school congestion with cars parking. We have a Maverick, and now Maverick takes semi trucks. We hear Jake brakes, which they're not supposed to do, coming down 88. We have a tractor supply. We have new homes at 88 and 395. This is a very, very congested area. We don't need a fire from a cell tower or a lightning hit on that cell tower that shares the same electrical source as the high school kids that could be electrocuted. I'm asking you, wouldn't it be wonderful to have a reputation in our valley that we, as a community, did something extraordinary against the tide for our beautiful valley? Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Riannon, and I'm a part of Minden for Safe Technology. I'm here today to talk about alternative locations for the two proposed, or the two towers that Verizon is putting up in our valley. For both locations, Verizon did an alternative analysis, and they evaluated several locations in the vicinity where they say they Oh, thank you. Where they said that, where they have a gap in coverage. And they ruled out every location except the two locations that they chose, which were at Station 14 and Station 6, which are both owned by Eastwork Fire Station. So tonight Verizon, or I want to give you the definitions of why they, two of the locations were, that they ruled out were at the high school, and tonight they're presenting at the high school to put that location back on the table. They had previously ruled this out. Rooftop facility, they said that the RF engineers determined that the facility protruding above the building with a 40-foot antenna centerline cannot serve the significant gap due to low height. The second location that they looked at at the high school was the field light poles, and they determined that it would require a new tower with a total height of 90 feet, which would be classified as a telecommunication facility according to the code, limited to 80 feet in the PF public facility zone. A facility exceeding the 80-foot height limit would require setbacks of five times structure height, 450 feet from residentially zoned property, and one mile from other telecommunication facilities. These setbacks would render a facility at this location to be infeasible due to the adjacent residential zones west and south, which are no more than 350 feet from the height of the light poles. Further, the stadium is less than one mile west of the AT&amp;T Monopole. So they ruled both those locations at the high school out, and now tonight they're going to be presenting at the high school to put that back on the table. So we got word from the planning that Verizon was stationed 6, across from Pinion Hills. They have now proposed to move that tower on the same location, but 100 feet over to the bottom of the property line, more out, excuse me, to the back corner of the property line, which is only 100 feet from where they proposed it from the first time. So if that's their idea of working with the community to find an alternative location, I don't really think that that's really working with us. It's 100 feet. It doesn't change anything. It's still in the middle of our neighborhood. It's still too close to Pinion Hills, and it's still too close to our residence. Thank you for listening to me today. I just really hope that you guys, like, err on the side of caution. We don't want it in the middle of our neighborhood. It doesn't need to be in Johnson Lane. We have been working with Verizon to find alternative locations. We have presented it to them. We have presented things to you that there is other places. We know that they need coverage. We're not saying that we don't want these cellphone towers. We're just saying we don't want them where they have proposed to put them. So we would like to work with them, especially at Station 6. We want to work with them with that. So if the high school was not a viable location to begin with, and now it's back on the table.
I'm sorry, but you've exceeded your three minutes, and I I just didn't keep the buzzer buzzing, that's all. I didn't want to.
Can you state your last name?
I missed it.
Yeah.
When the buzzer didn't keep buzzing.
That's why I kept talking, it's Camper.
Just tell me next time.
Thank you. Ms. French?
She's passionate. Can you tell? Hi, my name is Katrina French, and I represent Minden for Safe Technology. You guys have heard me speak before. Here I am again. I want to address the claim that this tower, that I want to address the claim that this tower is necessary to address a coverage gap in Minden. Is it based on their records and their analysis? Hired by Verizon, they say it is. We've hired our own guy, and maybe that's not the, we know that that's not the case. That's why we have found other locations. There's also co-locations where there's already existing towers. The Mill, the Sheriff's Office. Now Verizon has bought Frontier, which is on County Road and 395. The coverage maps Verizon submitted are vague and lack transparency in their methodology. In fact, these maps conflict with the FCC's National Broadband Map, which shows adequate coverage in the area. This discrepancy raises serious questions about whether this tower is truly needed. Furthermore, there are viable alternatives that have not been adequately explored. For example, fiber optic technology provides high-speed connectivity without the need for large visually intrusive towers. Additionally, Verizon could address any genuine coverage issues by upgrading existing infrastructure through cell splitting and sectioning. These solutions are far less disruptive and more compatible with the character of our community. The Development Code requires applicants to prove that their proposed project is both necessary and the least intrusive option. Verizon has failed to meet that burden. By approving this application, the commission would be allowing any unnecessary and harmful project to move forward despite the availability of better alternatives. We have found better locations away from schools, businesses, and homeowners. And I remember moving to the valley in 86 from being up in Lake Tahoe. Moved there in 79 to get away from the city. I don't even recognize Lake Tahoe anymore. Please, please, don't allow this to happen to our small, little community. I, for one, as well as many others in my group, will end up having to sell our homes. My husband built our home 45 years ago from the ground up. We would like to retire and stay there until we pass on. So please don't change our community into a city. I'm sorry.
Thanks.
I'm passionate, too. Got a lot more to say, but.
Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Cindy Trigo. I'm with Minden for Safe Technology. It's unfortunate I couldn't attend the last Commissioners' meeting when you had a good discussion with Kara Easton regarding the mitigation report. Appreciate the fact Commissioner Tolbert brought up some good, great questions, you know, regarding that. And I know your concern was about, and it was my concern too, regarding the Stafford Act in whether not adding cell towers to the mitigation report would create an opportunity if something did happen that you wouldn't get the funding from the state and federal, which was required to be added to the mitigation report. However, I think an opportunity was missed with Kara Easton sitting here. She did state that, that the cell towers weren't added because they're not natural occurrences. However, there is a technological hazard situation in the mitigation report that clearly states that you have Nevada energy and you have cyber attacks. Neither one of those are natural occurrences. Those are man-made. God forbid cyber attacks become a natural occurrence. But I think you guys missed an opportunity to ask Kara Easton to do what they've done for everything else to put in that mitigation report, is to do a risk and evaluation of cell towers. I can't state enough how much information I have sent you, over 40, 50 links of all the dangers of cell towers, of incidents that have happened across the country, including Nevada. So I would request at this point, for the record, that somebody ask Kara Easton to do a risk and evaluation for the, for the opportunity to put that in technological hazards somewhere down the line in that mitigation report. So I'd appreciate cooperation to do so. That would be to the benefit for the safety of this community. The other thing is, we know we got the appeals coming up next week. Our group, at the request of many Commissioners, to add, to bring some alternative locations to this, this board, to this commission, to provide for Verizon, and we have done that. We spent a whole year between educating ourselves, speaking to experts across the country, spending tens of thousands of dollars, and there's nothing in it for us other than to protect this community for safety reasons and for the children, for the residents. The thing is, is that we really need to have spaces and open spaces. We have plenty of open space down here. This is not a mega city where you have to put it on a corner of a block. And I believe we've stacked this room time and time again, Planning Commission, Town Board. Please, listen to the citizens. The citizens don't want that. And the thing Verizon will do, they'll put the tower in, they leave, and it's up to us to suffer the consequences. And I would ask, in closing, all of you, would you want that tower in your backyard?
Thank you.
I don't think so. Thank you very much for your time.
It's wonderful to see a child here.
Thank you. Good morning, Board of County Commissioners. My name is Zach Nash. This is my daughter, Zippora. It happenedstance, I was able to come be a part of this meeting. I wanted to come, but I work up at the lake doing construction, so it's hard during the middle of the day, so. We moved from Truckee to here, and we fell in love with Douglas County. Great group of citizens, people who care like the people behind or in front of me. And it's just really, that's why we're here, is because of people who want to protect their community, protect them against, and also see the development and betterment of the community. I've emailed some of you, and I don't disagree that we do need to, you know, make steps towards the future, but at the same time, not at the expense of our health and even my children. The fact that there's not been hardly any testing done on 5G and where they want to put these towers is very concerning to me. You know, I hope you guys, and I believe you are, really listening to the people and making a determination on what's best for us, not what's best for Verizon or whoever. And then, so in closing, I just would like to say a brief prayer. God, thank you for this county commissioner meeting.
You know, you're speaking to us during public comment, and I believe in prayer, I like prayer, but during public comment, you speak to us.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine.
Thank you.
God, thank you so much.
Oh, wait, wait.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else to say to us?
Well, I'm praying, I'd like to say a prayer for you guys, for wisdom, for
You know what? Please do that, but not during public comment.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you, and I hope and pray you guys will take everybody's words with weight and do what's best for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Gibson.
Good morning. We have no spirituality this morning. This is a common law signature under duress, all rights reserved. We do not surrender our freedom of speech or the right to peacefully assemble with this unlawful governing body. Jason Gibson, post-political prisoner, Douglas County candidate for Board of County Commissioner, 2024. What we have here today is the same process that we witnessed with the Painted Rock Mine. Fact-resistant, corporate-bodied, individuals who cannot hear a word of what you're saying. And they won't because they worship fiat currency and Federal Reserve notes and commerce over the people and the quality of life that we all invested in here in Douglas County. We got 40 years of evidence to show Douglas County is the wealthiest county in Nevada. We laid a 111-page affidavit on this council last two weeks ago to show the mental illness social engineering schemes that they manufacture at the Jalek Institution. This is a criminal institution. Douglas County has one of the highest mental illness rates in the state, and the highest suicide amongst our youth happens to be the epicenter of Douglas County. This next affidavit shows how I was falsely accused by Douglas County law enforcement, Melissa Elges, the wife of Ron Elges. It shows how the authorities in this county falsely accuse you and mischaracterize you, and then bribe psychiatric doctors to have you profiled as being mentally ill and to have you unjustly incarcerated, in my case, for 42 days. It shows, again, the total lack of accountability when it comes to upholding the law, keeping us safe in our persons, places, properties, and effects.
Mr. Gibson, that's not under our jurisdiction.
It is your jurisdiction. It's exactly, it's your responsibility. You all took an oath and a pledge. You're all sitting there because of your oath and your pledge. And your first responsibility is upholding the state and federal constitutions. You seem to have forgotten that we are the employers. You're the employees who are supposed to be honoring your word. But you don't honor your word, and that's why these people are complaining. The fact that they had to hire a consultant to tell you what you already know. The fact that they're here getting absolutely nothing done and that there's no public relations response or any kind of formal acknowledgement about what is going on or what you're doing to address these kinds of concerns.
All right, thank you. Your time is up. Welcome.
Good morning, Bill Cerito with the group Minden for Safe Tech. I want to talk about Station 6. Moreover, I want to speak about the Planning Commission's decision to vote no on Station 14, and they gave their reasons that they were, would be committing a code violation because they're aesthetically displeasing, which is a code violation. And one of the members said that there's no study on health effects, and he didn't want to be on the hook in case a kid got sick in the five or 10 years down the road. They didn't want to be responsible for that. So I thought that was pretty important. But when it came to Station 6, they gave that to Verizon. They said no to 14, said yes to 6, but they gave no reason for that. No reason. I did a professional assessment of the four blocks that are behind Station 6. As you know, the road, Stephanie, gradually goes up as an incline. Those 100 homes that are on the east side will be, their view of the Hot Spring Mountains and Job's Peak will be impeded by an 80-foot toilet bowl brush. And I can prove that. I used a rangefinder, and I can prove those four blocks, which are 100 homes, will be looking at a toilet bowl brush before they see that beautiful mountains. Now, can you find a real estate agent say, no, that won't, that won't damage real estate prices? Yes, you can find one. We found three that say they will damage home prices. Now, we've given you alternate locations. Now, we've given you alternate locations. We worked very hard on that with our lawyer and our RF engineer. We actually have seven different locations. We've provided them to you, to Verizon, our lawyers working with Verizon's lawyer for alternate, open space location. And one of my favorites is the new courthouse off Buckeye. I actually went out there and spoke to the construction manager, and I looked at the plans, great nine-point-eight acre site, and, but the whole footprint is eighty acres, which is owned by the county. There is electric power going out there. This is an ideal spot for the tower, and it's only a mile and a quarter from here. And an eighty-foot tower would suffice all those needs, according to our RF engineer. I want to cordially invite you tonight to the school board meeting where health effects will be on the table. We know we can't speak about it here, but please come to that tonight. We look forward to seeing you. God bless. Love y'all.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment and move, if there's no response to public comment, to approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tolbert and seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian that we approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously. We'll turn to approval of previous minutes. Is there a motion? Approve the draft minutes of the February sixth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting. Commissioner Gardner.
They move for the approval of the draft minutes of February sixth. February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners.
It's February sixth or twenty-sixth?
February sixth.
All right. It's been moved by Commissioner Gardner, seconded by Commissioner Rice, that we approve the draft minutes of the February sixth meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously. Moving to the consent calendar. Does anyone need anything pulled, or is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent calendar items A through P.
It's been moved by Commissioner Rice and seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian that we approve the consent calendar items A through P. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimously. We will move to the administrative agenda. Agenda item one for presentation only. Presentation by the Tahoe Douglas Visitors Authority, TDVA, on the Tahoe Blue Event Center after the first full year of operations. Here to present is Carol Chaplin, President and CEO of Lake Tahoe Visitors Authority, and Kevin, help me out, Kevin.
Briski. Briski.
Briski.
It's actually easier to say than it is to spell.
Yes, yes. Kevin Briski. Did I get, that's it?
Perfect.
All right. I'm going to just make my own spelling in my mind for that. The general manager of the Tahoe, the Tahoe Blue Event Center.
Thank you, Commissioner Hales, Chair Hales, and commissioners and guests. Appreciate the opportunity. Carol Chaplin, I'm actually representing the Tahoe Douglas Visitors Authority this morning for the Tahoe Blue Event Center. And as Chair Hales mentioned, I have Kevin Briski. He is our general manager from Oakview Group, and Oakview Group has about over three hundred buildings across the country, and they went through an arduous RFP process for our event center a couple of years ago and won that bid. And we have been working with Kevin here. He moved here in twenty twenty-one in October with anticipation of, of opening the building in December of twenty twenty-one?
Two.
Two, I'm sorry, twenty-two. And here we are after just one year of operation, so, and Kevin will be able to speak to some of the challenges that we had in bringing that thing out of the ground. We'll, we'll talk a little bit more about that. I'm going to turn that over to Kevin. He does operate the event center, has seventeen full-time staff, a number of part-time employees, and it's been my pleasure to work with him over the last couple of years. And I would just mention that Kevin is a resident of Douglas County, right down here in the valley, so he's well aware of, of the county and often is my sidekick when we go to different community events and supporting our various nonprofits and, and other organizations. So it's, it's, it's nice that we have our Douglas County resident with us, and, and I am also a Douglas County resident, so appreciate your service here. And we'll start with Kevin's presentation, and then I will step back and be available for questions along with Kevin.
Thank you very much. Am I able to stand?
Feel free to sit down while you present if you'd like.
Sounds good. So, yeah, so as Carol mentioned, I'm the general manager, Tahoe Blue Event Center. Been here since October twenty twenty-one with the expectation of opening December twenty twenty-two. We did run through some challenges getting open, which we'll go through in the next slide here, but did want to talk a little about some of these highlights from, from when we opened. So it was a pretty quick turnaround and, and a big thank you to a lot of the employees of Douglas County because they really made this happen. I think we were really, did a great job of only having, working with a sliding date for when we were going to open was a huge challenge. We had one event contracted that unfortunately we weren't able to be open for, but with the help of another property up at the lake was able to accommodate them, which was great. But then we had a pretty strong schedule of events starting September second. So ultimately, on September first, which was a Friday, we got the certificate of occupancy, our temporary certificate of occupancy. We had our staff members stationed around Douglas County to get everything we needed once we got that permit to be able to operate that weekend for a wedding on September second. So that was our first event. It was on a Saturday, and then went right into one of our biggest events that we've actually had so far. And it was a really important event for us. It was the National State Park Directors Association Conference that September. Every state gets to host it once every fifty years, and this was Nevada's turn, and they chose to host it at the new event center. So they were kind of with us side by side, hoping that we would get open in time, and we did, and it was an amazing event. So it was our first big conference, and we had representation from fifty different states here in town to help us with that opening. So it was really exciting for us. Our first major concert was Pitbull. That was September twenty-ninth, followed by our first sold-out concert, which was Billy Strings on October eighth. Just some other quick highlights, top-ranked boxing and nationally televised event through ESPN was here November fourth, huge youth hockey tournament, January twelfth through fifteenth, again, representing a lot of teams from different states. Sold out day two of Reggae Fest in February eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Nate Bargatze sold out. The Nevada Republican State Convention was here May twenty twenty-four, and then another huge conference, our largest conference of that first fiscal year, the Society of Outdoor Recreation Professionals. That was May sixth through ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Just before you go too much further, I'm trying to, I've got all these great dates of when the events happen. I'm trying to figure out when the slow period, so this event center was built so that we would improve traffic to the South Shore during the slow periods.
Yes.
Can you, what is considered the slow periods, so we can compare them to what would you have?
So I think September through really the beginning of December, I think, is that first shoulder season that we really see the strong conference business, and that's one of our goals, is during the weekdays.
I, I'm not asking what the strong conference periods are. What is a slow period?
That is the slow season. Yes, sorry. Yep. So it's, it's really September through the beginning of December, and then again, probably from, I would say, middle of March through middle of June.
Okay, thank you.
So those are the areas that we are really focusing on for that shoulder season to drive business. Now, luckily for us, those shoulder seasons do match up with conference seasons as well, so it's a great natural fit to drive that business weekdays during the slow times up at the lake, so. So as Carol mentioned, we did have some challenges getting open for twenty, for December twenty twenty-two, which was why it was pushed back to September twenty twenty-three. A bunch, we don't need to remind people of, of all the fires and the smoke and the evacuations, but supply chain was, was definitely an issue still from, from COVID. The big thing was the electrical components that really slowed down, and there was a year delay in getting some of those things. And then, you know, the, the large winter really prevented people from getting to the lake to perform a lot of the construction projects and allowing to work on the project until the building was enclosed. The other thing with the first year is because we opened in September, our fiscal year, I think similar to yours, is July through the end of June. So there were two months in this first fiscal year with no revenue, so there's only ten months of revenue, but still the extra two months of expenses. As we talked about, the short booking window was a challenge. Until we were open, a lot of the national touring events really didn't want to commit to something because they didn't want to have to potentially change their routing. So it got us a little later as far as some of those booking windows go. Same thing to, to get fully staffed. We didn't want to have a lot of staff in place until we knew there was revenues to cover those expenses. And then the other thing is just continually working that first year and, and still working a little bit to get projects completed and things up and running, which ultimately leads to some additional startup costs as well. But I think overall, with those challenges, it was a very successful first year. We had almost a hundred events with that, and I think the event center was very well-received. So now we're in our second...
Madam Chair, can I ask a question? So when you leave the first year, I just want to make sure I'm following you correctly. You said the revenue generated was one sixty, seven thirty-two in sales and two fifteen, nine thirty-two in entertainment. Is that correct?
Sorry, that's the second, that's this current fiscal year. So I, I didn't put the numbers in for the first fiscal year, but the first fiscal year, I believe, was almost a million dollars between the two. So it was like four hundred, around four hundred in, I think it was sales tax and five hundred in entertainment, or it was reversed, but I can get those exact numbers for you.
It would be nice to know what it's bringing in.
Yes.
And then also what the expenses are. I don't see the expenses in here.
For the event center itself, yes. We can provide, and I think it's, Carol can probably comment as well, but I believe the audit is a public document on the TDVA website. We have been audited, and that's all in there.
We're coming to the board to discuss this first year. It would be nice if we had it as a board, not that it's in an audit. So next time you come, if we can see both the revenues that are produced and the expenses, that's a concern of mine, along with how much traffic we're bringing in the off-seasons to the South Shore. Those are the things that were the reason, that was the reason it was built, and then we can see how much money the event center has cost compared to how much revenue it's bringing in or additional traffic.
Yeah. And I think we have those numbers, right? Yeah, so I think...
We'll have to look at the, the report, but was it twelve or one, eleven point nine?
It was eleven, eleven point nine.
Yeah, it was eleven and, eleven point nine in revenue and twelve million in expenses. And that was for just those, that first twelve months, two months that were not open.
Thank you. That's helpful.
And then, so July kicked off our, our second year, which is FY twenty-five, which is what we're currently in, our first full operating year. So again, just mentioning some of the events we had, and as Commissioner Tarkanian mentioned, we look at those shoulder seasons and we look at some of these events here. So four conferences grossing over a hundred thousand, all of those are in that shoulder season. And again, I'll keep mentioning it because I think it's really important. The great thing about the conferences is that's all midweek business. So that's when hotel rates at the lake, if you go on any of the properties' websites, you'll see the, the difference in rates, and that's our goal, is to try to drive up that, that additional income. And I think that's what a lot of these conferences do, which is excellent. The Night Monsters kicked off their inaugural season, which we'll get into a little later because that's a very important part of our operating budget now. And we look at some of these other events, so sold-out Park McColm, that was in October shoulder season, back-to-back sold-out shows in November, and then a midweek, our first NCAA event, Nevada versus Colorado women's basketball game, and I think it was, it went really well, so there's going to be additional, hopefully, events there. And then getting into, again, this, the second half of the year, a two-day sold-out John Summit event in, in February. So these numbers you see are these sales tax. This is from July through January of what was generated.
I guess my question to, I'm sorry.
Sure. Commissioner Tarkanian.
So my question is, if we did a million the first year and we only had ten months in revenue, we've only done three hundred and seventy thousand in seven months this year? Seems like a big drop.
Yeah, I, well, let's see. Yeah, so it is seven right now. Again, I'll have to confirm those numbers from the first year, but I think the difference is, just looking back at the previous year, we had some really big shows, and when we have some really big shows like Pitbull, Adam Sandler, Billy Strings, that ticket revenue is, is very high, and entertainment tax is nine percent. So that really, as you're collecting all that ticket revenue, that's really driving it up. We haven't had shows this year yet that have had that huge ticket dollar value, you know, tickets at a hundred and fifty dollars a ticket, two hundred dollars a ticket. These shows that have sold out, their ticket pricing was more thirty-five dollars to a hundred dollars, let's say, somewhere in that range. So I think that's a little part of the discrepancy, especially on the entertainment side. I think you'll see that increase quite a bit because John Summit, which was the two sold-out shows, that's February. We don't report February sales tax until the end of this month, so that number will significantly increase. The other thing is Reggae Fest is not included either. That will significantly increase as well.
Just one quick, wouldn't this be better if we had this done at the end of the full fiscal year, so we could talk apples to apples instead of something in the middle?
We can certainly invite back.
Yeah, we'd be more than, you know, happy to come back in probably August, I think, would be the best timeframe when we have the, the final numbers through June. So then moving on to the, the Night Monsters, a great addition to the Tahoe Blue Event Center. This is their inaugural season. Again, looking at those shoulder season, October through April is a great timeframe for us as we're looking to drive traffic. Thirty-six regular home games, potential for the playoffs. Right now, I believe we're sitting in third, and the top four teams make the playoffs, so still a while to go, and we are in one of the most competitive divisions in the ECHL, so very important, a few weekends of hockey left. It, it's a great partnership with the Vegas Golden Knights, so it's great to be partnered with Vegas and then Henderson, who is their AHL affiliate. And this does bring a lot of additional revenue to the Tahoe Blue Event Center, so projecting about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that's net revenue, not gross. That's, that's net revenue. Not only is this great for tourism, but it's also great for the local residents. As we take a look at our zip code reports, we see there's a great balance of who's attending these games. They have great, strong community engagement, which is wonderful, and they're willing to make a long-term commitment to Douglas County, which is excellent for us as well. And, and as we, we touch on this, I will mention that as, as we've kind of gone from our pro forma when we first got here in twenty twenty-one to where we're currently at, we've seen quite a change in what we thought was going to happen. And I think it's, it's for the better of what our goal was for this community, and that is conference business has been much stronger than we originally thought it was going to be, which is excellent, because as we continue to mention, that is in the shoulder seasons during that weekdays. The other things that we're seeing is strong youth sports. As we continue to grow the youth sports, we have a huge volleyball tournament this weekend that has doubled in size from last year. In fact, they don't even fit in our facility anymore, so they're using a second facility in the community, really, which is exciting. Our cheer event, which is next week, that's doubled in size from the first year, so that can bring five thousand between attendees and participants to the community. We now have five to six youth hockey tournaments that are most likely going to be annual tournaments. So the youth sports has been very, very strong. The conference business has been very, very strong, which is great when we're talking about generating hotel nights, room nights, people spending money in, whether it be restaurants or retail, whatever it is, in the community, because we're seeing that a lot of these groups are nationwide. We're getting teams for these hockey tournaments from Alaska, Florida, Ohio, all across the country. So it's been a really important part of our business and a piece of our business we continue to want to grow and partner with other venues outside of us to make these even bigger and to continue to grow them, which is, which is pretty exciting.
Mr. Briski, I have a question on, on the Tahoe Night Monsters, but before I ask, I just want to say, I think there are incredible benefits that are intangible to having the event center, the Tahoe Night Monsters, and all the other events that are here. I hear people talking about what a great time they're having and events there, and I see it myself when I've been to events. And this just, I just had to mention as a preliminary matter, what a wonderful, what a wonderful thing.
Thank you.
A question about the Tahoe Night Monsters. I know since there are so many games, I wondered if, how attendance has been over time, especially in the midweek. I wondered if, how attendance has been over time, especially in the midweek games.
So midweek are definitely slower than, than the weekend games. And the nice thing is through this first season, we're able to really gather the attendance data, so that when we're looking at dates for the second season, which we're already, you know, setting those dates, we're able to focus on those time periods where we're seeing the strongest attendance, to allow for the most success for not only the Night Monsters, but for the venue as well. And then also, you know, at the same time, judge, okay, when do we want those dates to, to drive business to the, to the area? And I think what we're seeing is, as you mentioned, the weekends are stronger than the weekdays. But with our schedule, because there's no teams in our area that are within driving distance, we have to pretty much schedule three games in a weekend. So because of that, we're normally going to be Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or Wednesday, Friday, Saturday. So we're going to most likely get one of those weekday games just for, for travel reasons. But we, but we have seen strong attendance. I mean, there's seven sold-out games so far, so there's still seven left to play. So they played 29 games, seven of those have been sold out, which is really exciting. So we're really focusing on what drove that success. For example, right after the holidays, the end of December, really, really strong. So want to make sure that we're looking at those dates again for next year. Because what we're seeing, as mentioned, is it's not just for the benefit of, of either tourists or residents, it's both. And we're finding, right after the holidays, there's a lot of people in town potentially already, whether it be skiing or doing whatever during those breaks, and they're all looking for things to do at night. So it's a great alternative for families to have something to do and go to. So we're really focusing on a lot of those weekends as well. The nice thing is too, and it works to our advantage, is with the, with them having to have three games in a weekend and a team already being here, it allows us to be really flexible, and we have a great partnership with the Night Monsters to, to move dates. So if, for example, a concert comes to us and they want a date that the Night Monsters are looking at, it's easier to switch that Night Monsters date because the team's already in town. We don't have to work on a visiting, reworking a visiting team's travel schedule. They just move a date one way or the other that weekend to accommodate a concert. So the great thing is it doesn't allow us to miss out on any potential big opportunities or any additional revenue. So it's, it's been a really great partnership with them.
Thank you.
So this is some information on the, the room nights generated. So we look at FY ' '24 actuals with the conferences, conventions, sporting events, and industry events, almost 10,000 room nights generated. And while we did almost 100 events in that fiscal year, those 10,000 room nights are only based on 31 of those events. And the reason that is, is because it is very difficult for us to track for concerts and events where we're not setting up the room blocks, where, where they're staying. So we know that number is much higher, which we're saying is an estimate of another 25 to 30%, but from the ones we actually track, these are, these are those numbers. So we know these are actual factual numbers.
Commissioner Gardner and then Commissioner-
This is where I, this is where I really look at the numbers, okay? Because one of the driving forces for the event center was the declining revenues in gaming in our four casinos up there. And, and, and also the declining room nights, okay, which has some severe impact on the county financially, okay? And also the, the dwindling of the employees that the hotels required in order to, to host the, the visitors, okay? So, and of course, sitting on the Carson Valley Visitors Authority, we understand that there's a trickle effect, a downhill effect. So when you drive something up there, for instance, I know that I, I was in a restaurant in a, during one of your hockey games, and here on the valley floor, and it was an individual wearing a, a jersey or, or a paraphernalia of some sort, and I asked him about it. I believe it was the Kansas City Mavericks or something, you know?
Yep.
And they were visiting down here during the day while they had a night game that night up, up on the, so I see those. The, the questions I have is, is this, demographics of attendees. Now, I know that in order to buy a ticket for the Tahoe Blue Event Center, for whatever event it is, you have to go through Ticketmaster, pretty much. I mean, that, that's, and, and, and I have to, and I'll, I'll get to that in a second. But we should have then the ability to track everybody that's buying tickets-
Correct.
-based on their zip code.
Correct.
Okay? And that's where I would like to see a statistic that you could bring back to us and show us where are our attendees of these events coming from. I would imagine, I, I understand we have a huge following in Sacramento, the Central Valley, maybe the Washoe area, maybe east, eastern counties. Where, where, where are these people coming from? Because I know that they're not all local.
Correct.
Okay? And I think that's an important statistic for us to, to look at, okay? And of course, when they come for this, their spending dollar increases as well, okay? And so those are, so some economic factors for the county. And I know that, once again, that was a driving force of why the state legislature and those casinos wanted this built, is, is to capture those dollars in revenues of new attendees, new tourists into our community, who are also taking a look at what else we have available. You know, I, I say that, you know, when I go to visit a location, I do a general scoping out of the area, and then my wife and I determine how we want to go back and visit a particular venue for a longer period of time and what else is available. So now let's, let's go to the Ticketmaster thing, because that's where I get the majority of complaints out of our residents, particularly in the cumbersome, and I found it cumbersome also, in Ticketmaster. Because, for instance, a Tahoe Night Monsters game, you buy it through Ticketmaster, and then they, you have to have the Tahoe Night Monsters app on your phone to find it. You can't go to Ticketmaster and find it. You have to go through the, the Night Monster app. So, and I had some residents call me just a couple days ago and say, why isn't there the ability to walk up to the Tahoe Blue Event Center and buy a ticket for an event?
There is.
There is now.
So it has been since-
I don't know if that's always been an exception.
It has been since, since we opened. And, and just so that everyone knows, it's Wednesday through Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., our box office hours. Anyone can walk up to the box office and purchase tickets during that time. And then anytime there's an event day, the box office is open for extended hours on that event day leading up to the event. So a lot of the hockey games aren't selling out in advance. I mean, they've sold out that day of, but it's the opportunity, and we get a lot of calls about that as well, of, of just that. Is there an alternate way than going online to purchase tickets? And that's what we let them know is 10 to, 10 to 4, Wednesday through Friday, and then leading up to events, day of events as well.
I also found that Ticketmaster is extremely expensive, just the, the use of that app, you know, that Ticketmaster. So you're paying a premium price, 15, $20 for, for, maybe, I might be exaggerating. I don't know what the number is. Okay, I shouldn't state, state that. But it's, it's an additional hit out of their pocketbook. So if there was an easier way or a better way, I don't know, Eventbrite might be another opportunity. I, I don't know. But, you know, for what, for what a, a resident or a attendee is paying in regards to the Ticketmaster price, it might be worth the extra dollars to have your ticket box, box office open in a more, a more timely manner.
Yeah.
Or even, or even maybe make it available for the, for the hotels there to be able to sell tickets rather than even coming over to your facility.
Yeah.
So anyways, just some ideas. But these are, once again, these are the numbers I look at, is what's driving, what's bringing revenue into our county.
Definitely. And we can definitely share those, those, those zip code reports. I will point out, and this is, you know, just stuff that I've looked at, because we're, we're the same thing. We want to make sure we're, we're driving that, those hotel nights. So I just, a few specific examples of things that we've seen. So Parker McCollum was a Saturday, October 26. And, and one of the things I do when we have events is I look at the different properties up there to see what their rates are throughout that, that, those weekends. And I noticed on that weekend, even from Friday night to Saturday night, which are two weekend nights, so you'd think they'd be very comparable, the rate on Saturday was on average 75 to $100 more on Saturday nights than it was on Friday nights. So there could be other factors, but 5,000 people for a concert most likely is leading to that additional revenue.
So, and I know that, I know it's hard to compare our numbers in this, in this time period, because as we recognized in our room tax reserves, is that we, we enjoyed a boom in, in stay vacations. And, and so it's hard to compare room nights in the COVID period. I, and I, I, I thank you, please don't get, anger at me for mentioning the COVID word, but you know, I know that's a bad word in, in Nevada. But that period of time, during that time, you know, we, we did experience it. So maybe we could go back into the 2019, 2018, 2020 time before COVID and look at room counts versus what we are doing in room counts now. That might be a, a good comparison number.
Definitely.
Commissioner Tarkanian.
Thank you. These numbers that you've given us, do they include the VHR residents? I mean, bookings also?
They do not.
Okay.
So these are just room blocks that we set up at the different properties.
Okay. And it's kind of, it's very difficult for you to be able to figure out, as you mentioned, how many people come in here because of these events or not. The one thing that stuck in my mind, we had the VHR issue several years, it might have been just a few months ago, seems like several years ago, that there was only like a 50, 51% average room occupancy at the casinos over the last couple of years, really low. I've never heard of something that low. Is there a way in the future, if you can give us what their occupancy rates are, maybe over the full year, and also maybe during this down period that we're trying to increase? And then the other thing that I thought, because you'd mentioned this, which I thought was a good point, was an increase in the room cost. So it's not just the occupancy, but you know, what has the revenue been for the room rates? Because I think, and, and I don't think you can be able to determine a lot from one year to another year, but you can over a period of time, and maybe over three or four or five years, we can have a good indication how this is going.
Definitely.
Cheryl Chaplin for the record.
There you go. Thank you. Really good questions, and we're kind of struggling with some of these. As you, as you can see on, on this particular slide, we're, we're talking about room blocks that we actually helped, you know, bring along to because of those group business. We can't tell what's being driven by someone that's coming just to an event, typically the entertainment events, or even perhaps some of the youth events that are coming, because we might have a room block at one of the, the hotels for those youth events, but they're not necessarily all staying in that one particular hotel. VHRs are also interesting, Commissioner Tarkanian, because they're, they're trending to be up nationally, 20 to 30% these days because of the, the value, if you will, for a big group. And we know that the youth sports are, are using those. So it'd be nice to, to understand that. We've also talked to your finance department about sales tax, and there's no way to get sales tax broken down by Douglas, for, for Douglas County specifically. The, the, the solution to that right now, I think, that will help you answer some of those questions is that we are under contract with a consultant to do an upgrade, an updated economic impact study. And they're taking actuals, they've talked to Kevin, they've taken actuals, and they've taken actuals from, from Douglas County and the other, the other jurisdictions to see if they can figure out exactly what the overall impact was. When we first brought this project to you a few years ago, the economic impact was considered to be around 40 to 60 million a year to the, to our destination, our community, our more regional community. And, and those were numbers before the event center was, was open. So now we're going back and we're looking at actuals. So we should have that later on this year. And I think that might help bring you comfort in terms of, of what some of these other numbers are that we just can't grab really easily. Does that help?
Yeah, it does, Ms. Chaplin. And the other question I, I had for you is, so these numbers are just the conferences and the conventions. They, they have nothing to do with a single-night Billy Strings concert, okay?
Correct.
So if an individual is coming from the San Francisco Bay Area, and that's why I'm asking for demographics in regards to zip codes, if they're coming from the San Francisco Bay Area, even perhaps Sacramento, the chances are when a concert gets out at 10 or 11 a night, they're more than likely going to book a room that night. And that's, and this information is not capturing that, right?
Correct.
So that's why you're saying that these numbers are really-
Yes.
-lower than, they really are, actuals.
Um, Carol Chaplin, again, Commissioner Gardner, that, but what you were bringing up is the surveys. And in those surveys, we are asking, did you stay? And how met, how much, how long did you stay? And, you know, there's some other questions that we ask, and we're continuing to revise those surveys so that we can get better data from, from those. So that's more like an intercept survey that will give us, you know, a sense. So that's also going to be available.
It, it also doesn't capture what they're spending in our restaurants.
Correct.
Outdoor, other outdoor activities, or actually spending at the gaming tables when they come up also, right? So it's a, it's a, it's a magnet, and, and it's, it's a good magnet.
County Manager Davidson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager, for the record. I just would direct the Commissioner's attention to the room tax page that we have set up on the county's website. That includes reports through November with occupancy rates at the lake and in the valley. And it does show percent occupancy for, in each of those reports, in case you want to review it. I will talk to our team about putting this information together in a better context so that we can look for trends and make it easier for the Commission to analyze. I will just additionally add that it's important when we're talking to, about our, when we're talking with, excuse me, our lake partners, occupancy is an important balancing act, balancing act for the lake, right? It may not be our objective when we talk, when we speak to responsible stewardship of the lake and the resources at the lake of having 100% occupancy. We might want to look at how we can achieve maximum dollars returned for visitor spend versus actual impacts on the environment and balancing those strategies. So I, I think the casinos will let you know that they're, they, if, if we were asking them to speak today, they're very comfortable with the occupancy levels that they're at, and they're targeting their pricing strategies based on the events at the event center. It's, it's a complex dynamic at the lake and, and a lot of moving pieces. So I don't want to get bogged down in just saying that the metric is we should be at 100% occupancy. I think it's something less than that for responsible stewardship of the lake, and we need to look at overall trends in the economic analysis.
Commissioner Tarkanian.
It's 50 some percent occupancy, and if the owners of those hotels are happy that they're there, then they got some problems, and maybe that's why they're still here or not in Las Vegas or somewhere else. The reason we, we talked about getting the event center, we went through this with VHRs, was it was supposedly like 100% occupancy during the real busy time periods, and then there was a really lower occupancy during these off periods, which is why I thought the event center was so important. And we wanted to see if they're pushing those numbers up. So if, if there's only, if it's a 50% total, and in the off-season, it's got to be 30, 40%, if we can move that up to 60%, then we're, the event center's doing a great job for the economy. And I agree with what Chairwoman Hales had said. I, I'm a big fan of, of these type of buildings, but what it does to a community from Las Vegas, and see what the Allegiant Center has done, and the one that where the Knights play. And I just think it's wonderful. But we're talking about on the Commission about the financial aspect of it, and that's where I think we want to see if we're getting people coming into these off periods.
Madam Chair, if I may respond?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Commissioner Tarkanian for your points. Jennifer Davidson, County Manager, for the record. I agree with you. I think we're saying the same thing. The most recent report occupancy numbers do reflect 47% occupancy at the lake, 95% occupancy in VHRs. So I, I think what we're finding also is when people are making decisions of where to stay at the lake, when they come to vacation at the lake, it's lots of families who are spending dollars in the casinos, in the restaurants, doing entertainment things, which does positively impact all businesses at the lake. They're just choosing where to stay based on their, their unique circumstances and needs. So I, I don't want to take away from what you're saying. I think we, we both agree.
Just, um, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just one additional comment. Thank you, Manager Davidson. Carol Chaplin, there, there are a couple of other factors in current occupancy rates, and I agree with Ms. Davidson that, that maybe ADR is a better way to look at it as opposed- agree with Ms. Davidson that, that maybe A D R is a better way to look at it as opposed to just pure occupancy, or, or RevPAR maybe is the better way to do it, because we do have rooms out of commission this year at the lake. Golden Nugget has their whole back tower out, Caesar's Entertainment with Harvey's now has rooms out, so you're, you're missing about five hundred rooms right now. In addition to that, we didn't have the greatest kickoff to winter, we've had a couple little dips here, it's not, it's not the one that we would have, that we would have planned, actually. It might be the one that I am enjoying a little bit more than the one two years ago, but, but we also did, we just didn't have a, a great kickoff to the winter season, and, and I know both California and, and Douglas County properties suffered a little bit as we ramped up, and now we seem to be kind of catching up a little bit. So, there's other factors with occupancy that kind of play into what our county manager was saying. But we're working on better data is really the, 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 the point of this, and I think with working with Douglas County Finance Team, they're also interested in understanding what the event center is, impact is, and, and we hope to bring that back to you when, when that study is done.
Thank you. I want to note, the reason those hotel rooms are out is because they're being renovated, which one would assume would lead to higher room costs potentially, and certainly we appreciate those casinos investing and keeping, keeping things up. All right, Commissioner Rice.
Thank you, you just stole my thunder, Carol. One of the things that I did want to mention is the fact that two of the major properties up there are under renovation, and the, the room count is way down, the available rooms. And we expect that to rectify itself in the near future. They are pouring a ton of money into their properties, and that would not have happened without this event center. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that when the event center first got its certificate of occupancy, there were some rules that came out of the, I can't say that, there's some rules that came out from the wilderness, and some of them were impossible to fill. Number one, they, they wanted to use Bluetooth as a measure of how many people came. One thing that they didn't take into consideration is you can have one car with five Bluetooth devices going at the same time, hearing aids, cell phones, cars, the information center in cars, and that was an impossibility for, for tracking. And recently, and you haven't covered this yet, is that they changed the criteria from events to population, which is a far better way of measuring the success or failure up there. The, an event was five people coming for a P T A meeting, and that counted the same thing as having a major event, and that is just no way to judge the success or failure of, of, in, a facility like this. So, luckily, or not luckily, there was no luck about it, that has been changed, so that it is now by number of population, not number of events, which is a great boon not only to the facility, but to the community. Because one of the ideas of having this facility was to have it a, a community place where people could come. And if you're going to charge the, the community, the, the same thing you would for a major hockey event, or, by the way, Billy Strings was really good. Anyway, so that's, that's one of the things that we need to keep in consideration, is that it's only been in operation for a short period of time, and things are changing. Some things need to change, some things don't need to change. I belong to several organizations, one of which we had our major convention there, and the comments I consistently got was how user-friendly our event center is. And I, I want to thank both of you for making that happen, because it took a whole lot of pressure off of me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rice.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Gardner.
Thank you. I just had a couple more comments, and that is, once again, this, this to me is, and the driving factors of bringing tourism, and certainly I don't want to see hotels close, those four casinos closed, they were on the brink years ago, several years ago, diminishing employee use, so tremendous financial impact overall to our community, to our county. I don't think that financial success for the event center can be based just on the number of events you run and the number of events and the number of people that attend, okay? We just want to make sure, and I think the public wants to make sure, is that you're generating enough income to pay your bills, right? And so you're not going into the red on an annual basis, and that's certainly, our community doesn't want that, because we don't want the threat of, of, of a nice building of this nature with getting down the line here and number one, not being able to meet their financial obligations and, and having to default, okay? So, financial success to me cannot be measured in just, just the financials of the event center itself, as long as you're, you know, making sure that you have enough money to pay your bills and, and, and operate. And this, to me, is, is where we, where the rubber meets the road, so to speak, you know, and, and that's an important factor for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. I was just going to say, thank you for your patience, Mr. Briskie.
No problem, no, this is great.
As we go through all this. I would like to pause right here and follow up on something Commissioner Rice brought up, and that is the, that, just to give a little more context, the TRPA put some restrictions on the event center and related matters, and those have recently changed, I understand, through a, what is being called a settlement agreement, and I wondered if you might address that.
Thank you. Thank you. To both, Carol Chaplin for the record. Both to Commissioner Rice and to Chair Hales. Commissioner Rice has been a little bit close to this, he is on the TRPA board, he's also, he also works with us as a board member on the TDVA. So, we talked about attendance, we have gone, our original permit had a hundred and thirty events per year as a restriction, two hundred and twenty event days. And as we spoke to the team at TRPA, which I, I just want to thank TRPA for all of the hours of work that went into looking at a, a different type of, of condition to measure our V M T neutral requirement, or vehicle miles traveled requirement, they spent a lot of time with this, and we did a lot of math. So, now, the new condition is two hundred and fifty thousand attendees per year. As Mr. Rice was mentioning, we were able to demonstrate that a, you know, five-person meeting had the same impacts in some cases as, as a five thousand event, attendee. And so, two hundred and fifty thousand per year is now the attendees that we are able to host. We also have the ability to do four large events in the summertime, which we were not able to do. Our cap was two hundred, or, excuse me, twenty-five hundred during the, the summer months. We now have the ability to do over twenty-five hundred four times during the summertime with a maximum cap of forty-three thousand people for those summer months, June fifteenth through Labor Day. And that gives Kevin a little bit of flexibility to get larger events in the summertime. We are never allowed to go head-to-head with a Harvey's Concert Series because the concept is, is that having that much impact in a small amount of area is not going to be good. We also see that as a financial consideration. Our, our destination is just not big enough for, to have a Harvey's Concert Series with eight thousand people and something over at the event center with five thousand people. And our casino partners are very much involved in those conversations about when we're booking and when we're not booking and what they have on hold, and so we're working very, very nicely with, with them. We also have, uh, so we're also now monitoring, Commissioner Rice mentioned, the Bluetooth counters, and that's a very long conversation, actually, that's a month's long conversation. And, and we were able to talk to TRPA about using the parking gate data, which is much more accurate, in and outs, all kinds of people of, you know, we can, we can identify these kind of people, and that's what we will be using to monitor our, our V M T. And then we will also be, now this is a mitigation measure, this isn't, this isn't an opportunity for us to book up to two hundred and fifty thousand attendees necessarily, but it's a mitigation measure that was, that was placed on us to run fixed route transit from the South Tahoe Y to the Kingsbury Transit Center for events over fifteen hundred people at any time of year. And as my conversations about this particular condition move forward with the Tahoe Transportation District, we may have the ability through their, their, looking at what their existing service is, to actually provide service three hundred and sixty-five days a year on a limited day basis, like on the weekends. And we haven't confirmed that yet, but that's what we're doing. And I see that as a huge opportunity to, to create a very, very dependable transit system on a, on a regular schedule that will help us increase ridership overall. So, those are the major ones. I think I've, I think I underline those all, Commissioner Hales, is there anything else that you might have questions about on that? Okay.
All right. Mr. Briskie, back to you.
Excellent. So, a, a handful of these, I'll talk to, address kind of some of the, the comments Commissioner Gardner made, but when we look at, when we're comparing F Y twenty-four to F Y twenty-five, I find this really interesting, because in F Y twenty-four, that's ten months' worth of data, where we have ten thousand room nights. For F Y twenty-five, we only have six months of data, and it's almost the same amount of room nights as we generated all of F Y twenty-four. So, a big reason of that is having that extra time to go after conventions, the larger convention, the larger the convention is, the farther out it books, they're booking three, four years. So, the big thing we're noticing is those numbers in F Y twenty-five for those six months are only based on sixteen events versus thirty-one the year before, so why are those numbers almost identical? It's because having that extra year, we're able to get much larger conferences during those weekdays to really help increase that, those room nights. So, that's been really important to us. The other thing I want to mention, which also addresses some of Commissioner Gardner's thoughts, is we do a great job, I think, communicating with not just the, the hotel properties up there, but the retail properties up there as well on these conferences and conventions. A lot of feedback we've received from them is, is when they go to a destination town, if they're going in the off-season, the opportunity outside of the venue become very difficult because properties maybe aren't staffed accordingly. They're, they're staffed for an off-season and not a five-hundred to six-hundred person convention in town. So, ahead of, you know, weeks ahead of the event, we know what meals they're having with us, what their plans are outside of that, and we're able to communicate with the restaurants, the hotels, they're not having lunch with us on these days. So, please make sure you are prepared for this hour, six hundred people getting out into the community needing to eat lunch in one hour to get back for, for a conference. So, we're trying to communicate all that if they're not having dinner. You know, how can we potentially work to have some additional restaurants open on a Tuesday or a Wednesday to really accommodate if that weekday business is there, so we make the experience very great overall? We have one conference that's coming in June for the second year, so they came one year, and that was their biggest concern, and it worked out so well, they've now committed to multiple years, because they want the destination, but they appreciate everyone in the whole community accommodating and not just the venue.
I, you know, if you don't mind.
Commissioner Gardner.
I can, I can, so, back in the other century, I ran restaurants, and, and it's, it's most, one of the most difficult things to operate a restaurant, is because it's mostly nights, weekends, nights and weekends, okay? And, and the fact that we have now brought in a, an event center that's primarily trying to gear for the, for the shoulder seasons, it allows our restaurant operators to employ employees on a full-time basis, also not just in the busy times of the year where we're attracting tourists for skiing and other activities. So, yeah, that, I, I see that as a huge benefit and a huge boom for our restaurants also and our, our permanent, you know, our employers to try to get a steady workforce, right? Because that's, that was always the most difficult thing, is, is how do you get, you know, fortunately, I ran a restaurant near, near a college, okay? And that's when they wanted to work, is nights and weekends, so that, that helped me do that. But otherwise, it's, it's difficult to, to operate those, you know, so, yeah.
And we do work closely with all the other restaurants, hotels up there as far as that, you know, the, the employees, where a lot of times, we will have employees that also work at another location, and it really helps being able to work a conference during the day with us, and then, like you said, at night, when those restaurants are busy, go and then work with those restaurants and be able to end up getting forty hours over a full week between two different positions instead of having to work at four different places. So, I think that's something we really try to work with and communicate as well. Going back to the, the zip code thing, that's something we could, I, I really want to present, because I think that is very valuable information. You know, one other, you know, story I'll say with that is, last year, John Summit was supposed to come here for an event, and we were going to have a major snowstorm. And I think initially, everyone wanted to move forward with it because we said, well, it's Tahoe, they get snow. But what we did is we saw, okay, there's over five thousand tickets sold, we looked at the zip code reports, and we saw locally, the percentage was maybe fifteen percent. People were coming from Vegas, L.A., San Diego, San Francisco, far places away. And after talking with everybody, we said, what a mess that could be if all these people who aren't used to driving in the snow are, feel like they're committed, come up here during the snow, what, what could that end up, what could end up happening? And then we ended up moving that a full year to, to accommodate everything and to make sure we made the right decision. So, not only are we able to see and track directly, like, like you said, Commissioner Gardner, how that's leading to hotel rooms, but also kind of some of the logistics of what is, what's a good idea and what's not sometimes. So, it, so it's worked out really, really well. And then, just to kind of mention one thing that Carol had mentioned too with permitting in TRPA, the other great thing is because we have all those email addresses through Ticketmaster for all our ticketing events, originally, TRPA wanted us to survey just a couple of ticketed events to, to get data. And because we have all the email addresses, we're able to survey every single, or at least send out and, and request survey results from every single person that attends a public ticketed event at our facility. So, obviously, you know, you're not going to get full participation, and the other thing we have to take into consideration is if we sell five thousand tickets to an event, we're not looking for a one thousand person response to get to twenty percent, because on average, you're getting four tickets in order, let's say. So, really, you're not sending it to five thousand people, you're sending it to twelve hundred and fifty. So, when we're getting three hundred survey results back for an event, we're actually exceeding the numbers you normally receive from surveys. And it's great not only to get the, the public transportation information and the transportation information, but valuable feedback for the event center on concessions and, and entry and exit, and, and a lot of things that really help us continue to improve how we operate the facility and make it better for people as they're attending. So, it, so it's a lot of great stuff we're able to find out through that. And so as we talk about public transit revenue too, and, and some of that, this goes into more what we're seeing for those events and event days. So, in the first year, which was that ten months, we had seventy-eight thousand people, as we mentioned, those attendance numbers were going to be lower because we had a less window to book in. window to book in, but we still had 82 event days and 131, or 82 events and 131 event days and generated over $300,000 from microtransit. In FY25, and this is actuals through March 9th and then estimates after that, we're projecting 184,000 event attendees, and that's with no playoff games taken into consideration, 103 events and 154 event days. That leads to $736,000 that goes towards Lake Lincoln microtransit, which is pretty exciting, and that is the full $4. So a dollar of that goes to monitoring, $3 goes to the funding.
Commissioner, I just, it's going to be, I'm sure, woman, I'm sorry, it's going to be just real quick question. You're not going to have an answer to it. But there's no way you generated, what was it, a million dollars the first year and only 340 the next six months with more than double the ticket sales and more than double the money that went to the microtransit? So it'd be nice to get the accurate numbers for that first year.
Yeah, definitely. So taking a look ahead of what's to come for FY26, so already, as we talk about that long lead business, that's our conference business, nine confirmed conferences, which is really exciting. Strong repeat business, as we mentioned, a lot of these conferences are making this their new location and returning year after year, which is great. Really looking forward to that second season of the Tahoe Night Monsters. It's going to be really great to build upon the success we had this first year. And kind of like we talked about, the potential for some major college sporting events. We're in a lot of conversations right now because of this being a destination. So you look at a lot of these other, let's take college basketball, for example, and their preseason, not really preseason, early-season tournaments where they're going to Maui and some of these nice locations, they're looking for destinations, and Tahoe could be a perfect location for something like that. So always having conversations there. We do have an international sporting event confirmed for November that we'll be announcing at the end of this month. That's going to drive a lot of people in from outside the country and really, what excites me about this event is exactly what we're talking about with those, that shoulder season. November is the least, is the month where the casinos have traditionally the worst occupancy rates. November is by far that month. We're looking at an event that could drive people over a 10-day period with rooms of 250 to 300, you know, a night, and that's just through the blocks they're going to place through us, not all the fans and other participants that come in. What we're really, our goal is to drive that rate up and the occupancy up during the slowest month in the lake. So I think that's going to be really exciting. We had mentioned the additional youth sporting events. It's been amazing what that business does, not just on the amount of people that they bring into the facility, but, or bring into the destination, but also the amount of revenue they spend in the facility. The additional, as Carol mentioned, events with no cap. I think this allows us to focus on some of those bigger events, but I think more importantly, what we haven't been able to do the first two years is really do some of these smaller events, some of these events that really benefit nonprofits and the communities because how our budget operated with the event cap is we really needed to focus on those revenue-generating events. And I'm not saying we want to lose money on an event, but we can now do events that really benefit the community, that benefits some of the nonprofits here at less of a profit margin to make it really work and really benefit the community and be a part of it. So really looking forward to that. Opportunity to book up to four Full House shows in the summer, that's another thing we're looking at. And then now that we have, as you talked about the data, we have two years of data to work with that really helps us decide, you know, a lot of those events and placement of events, becoming fully staffed. And the last one is, you know, as we continue to kind of get settled in at the event center, you know, we do a lot of events, as Carol mentioned, our company manages over 300 properties, and they're all a little bit different. They all do different things. And we, it allows us to build some really great relationships. So there are some events that we don't want to do at the Tahoe Blue Event Center for a lot of reasons, that there could be other great facilities within the community and within the county that we can potentially program those events for. So now that we have two years and going into our third year and feeling pretty comfortable, there's an opportunity for us to bring additional business to some of the other venues in town, I think, and that's something we want to start exploring come the spring of 2026. So a lot of exciting stuff coming for this next fiscal year.
Great discussion.
I just hear you commit to supporting our cultural arts facility.
Well.
Five to 700 seats is what we're looking for.
I was thinking more the fairgrounds.
And we're willing to take on partners.
I was thinking more the fairgrounds. The events I had in mind were more related to doing outdoors with dirt and at the fairgrounds, but there could definitely be some partnerships. You know, one of the things that I really enjoy when I come to a community is being involved in the community. So definitely more than happy to meet with the group. I just actually sat in last week with the Carson Valley Visitors Authority meeting, and a lot of that cultural center that you mentioned came up and definitely, you know, started thinking of potentially how we can become involved and assist and really work together. So more than happy to work with them and hear what they have planned and see how we can be of assistance, for sure.
I think that would be greatly appreciated because that's some of the expertise that we don't have that we're going to need, is what it actually takes to run that facility, and that's exactly the expertise you have. So we really appreciate you reaching out to the Carson Valley Arts Council, who is the not-for-profit, and that would be fantastic.
Perfect.
Great. Good idea. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think this was a very good discussion, and we appreciate you coming down and spending so much time.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you. All right. We are going to break until 11:45, and then I anticipate that we'll push through to the end without taking a lunch break. All right.
Game. We did not gamble. We did not stay the night, but we did eat so and pay for overflow parking. But yeah, I just would like to be as transparent as possible. I'm not familiar with anyone on the board, but I grew up in northern Nevada, raising a small family. We're in Reno now, but this is both a personal and professional kind of endeavor with this program. The idea being actually it falls under one of your four tenants here for the enhancing residence quality of life. This is a big quality of life proposal, and it's kind of what we're looking to do for young people engaging kids in the outdoors. That's kind of my job outside of kids. This is a youth focused program, but I'm just engaging more Nevada residents in the outdoors, and I do represent the Department of Wildlife in that as the outdoor connection coordinator. This is essentially a year over year youth licenses graph, blue non-residents, orange residents, gray totals. I know we're not, I guess we're not supposed to use the COVID word, but 2020 was a very significant outlier, but it showed that there is a driving force behind outdoor recreation. When people are freed up to do it, they choose it. But we've had essentially a, we had a precipitous fall off to levels that were even pre 2020 levels here. And as you all know, Nevada's population as a whole has been increasing that whole time. So losing proportionally is something that we wanted to work against and try to push forward or push back against, I should say. And this last one here is just a projection, but that's what we were on pace for before we launched this program. I'd also just like to point out, of course, rural counties and rural places have a higher proportion of their residents that hunt and fish as well as do many other outdoor activities. But hunting and fishing interest across the board is still incredibly high. These are data pulled from a 2018 Nevada report. You'll see a lot less people actually do the activities, but interest is is maybe much higher than you'd think, even in our most urban areas. And to kind of peek behind the curtains, we did a statewide representative adult survey in 2020, trying to identify what's keeping people from the outdoors and what's keeping people from enjoying time in the outdoors. And we came up with five really basic things from that. Time, weather, not enough places nearby, health and cost. These are all hard things to address, but we're going to focus on places nearby and cost. Those are the easiest to address. And the one caveat I'd like to give is that the survey was done in late July. So, you know, 70% of your residents being down south, that's going to drive a lot of the bus there. But so maybe that should be a little bit smaller, but we were going off of that when we came up with this idea. Nevada Youth License Fund, we want to make it easier for kids and their families to go fishing, to enjoy the outdoors. These are kind of all the little pieces that go behind it. But in Nevada, there's only one youth license, and it's a youth combination license. It's good for 365 days. It is a fishing license on paper. If you choose to take hunter education, it then becomes valid as a hunting license as well. We tried to keep this program as simple as possible. There are no barriers to entry. There's not a reduced lunch program. It's open to any kids that are 12 to 17 years old to get a free license through the program, so long as we have donations to cover the license. So even though it's a free, it's a free to a child license rather than a free license altogether. But we didn't want it to be encumbered by qualifications. And like I said, it's 100% donation driven program, and this is the flyer that we sent out in that first year in 2023. And I'm sorry, I should have said, please stop me if you have any questions if I, if I don't address anything. These are some of the results since we've launched the program. We've issued over 10,900 free licenses to kids. Almost 7,000 of those licenses have gone to new kids. And when I say new, I mean a child who's never had a license before in Nevada. Overall, give or take two out of three kids that has got a license through the program didn't have one in the past. You'll see that dark blue is reactivated. That's a reference to someone who had a license in the past, but not in the previous year. And loyal is a reference to someone who had a license last year and this year. Our kind of big, big numbers are that this program has helped us drive new kids to get a license and go fishing. And we've essentially that downward trend, we've reversed that, and we're up 20% for youth licenses compared to where we were two years ago. And I pulled some 2024 to now Douglas County results, just so you can see that how the kids in your community or how this may be impacting you locally. So that many youth licenses have been issued to kids for free since January of 2024, 234, and 122 of those kids had never had one before. So you stack up similarly to the rest of the state as a whole, maybe slightly less on the new side and slightly higher on the loyal side, but still half of the kids who are getting a license through the program got one for the first time. And just as ballpark numbers for you to go off of, give or take, a little over 500 kids currently hold a license in Douglas County, and you probably have 24, 2,500 kids that would be eligible. That's just based off of U.S. Census Bureau data. I'm not positive on that number, but it should be close. So this is just fun way to show that, hey, oh, man, I screwed that up. Fun way to show this is what we were on track for, where the big red X is that 12,4 number. We're pretty confident in that number. And this was our 2023 actual data, and I'll show later where we ended up in 2024. The digital age, there was a lot of talk about cell phone towers earlier, and I won't get into any of that. But I'd like to just recognize that this is the battle that we're up against is that everyone has a phone, everyone has a tablet, everyone spends, I think, actually, kids spend an average of seven hours a day on electronic devices, social media, TV. We're just trying to give ourselves a fighting chance and competing for people's time, essentially, and engaging kids informative life experiences early in life can kind of put them on a different trajectory. Like I said, this is 100% donation driven program. I use this picture because I can speak to it as a, as a local from Winnemucca. This is a small community pond in the area. And in the backdrop, you can kind of see the Humboldt River meandering through the valley. I used to fish in the river. Everybody used to just do that. But I, I never thought that this pond would be well attended, and it's packed all the time. There's people fishing it all the time. It's right there in town, and just has a little bit of a reference to investing in the proximity piece, but also that the department takes dollars and works to match them at the federal level, three to one, and reinvest into our communities. We've had individuals, we, when we initially launched, we opened it up to be able to be donated to throughout the year. So we have quite a few hunters and anglers who have chose to support the program. It's been over 3,500 individuals, and a good chunk of them are actually non-residents. 25% of the funding from hunting applicants is from non-residents that wanted to support the fund. Just to reiterate, there, there actually are a lot of kids that are interested in going, and we make it a little bit easier. This essentially acts as an incentive to choose fishing over something else. And for a family, a free youth license isn't going to afford you all of the things that it takes to go fishing. There's still quite a bit more, but it's enough to kind of jumpstart that activity. Demand greater than donations. This is just a reference to what we're able to do based on hunters, anglers, and NGOs. Over our first couple of years, we ballparked about 3,500 licenses. The idea behind this proposal is that if we were to engage each county commission at 15,000 a year, which is, would get us about 16,000 licenses a year to try and hit essentially a lofty goal that would exceed our COVID numbers, or 2020 numbers, I should say. And we can at least show that we've had significant growth in each of the last couple of years. The red arrow is 2024. 2023 was the first year of the program. And I know that you probably aren't familiar with State Fish and Wildlife Agency youth license numbers, but a 20% jump in two years when significant downward trend after COVID is pretty serious success for us. We're super excited about it and hope to keep it going. This is what you're going to see coming is the price tag, free licenses. And my pitch is that there's a lot of value added that comes along with that. And even though there's a fiscal cost, whether it's the positive experiences, time with family and friends, we saw this as a significant olive branch to different groups, whether it's boys and girls clubs, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Boy Scouts, you name it, all these groups that kind of foster these types of activities. This kind of gets rid of something for them that opens up the door to fishing. We can get into it, but just general time outside is, I'll throw one stat out there is that Americans ages six and up, only half of them in a year, give or take, will recreate outdoors and going for a jog or a hike count. So even though it may seem like a lot of people are outside, it's a lot of the same people. And there's a really big chunk of the population that doesn't, and even just spending a little more time outside has some positive health benefits associated with it. And I know we're up against lunch, and I'm trying to do this briefly succinctly and answer any of your questions. But the idea is we're just trying to add to these smiling faces here with a few more kids outside. And with that, I'll take any of your questions.
Thank you for that. Great presentation. Makes me want to get out.
That's my job.
Commissioner Gardner.
Thank you. So, Mr. Jones, and I support this program, so I don't want anything I say to miss, be misconstrued there. I was chairman for several years in our county of the Carson Valley Friends of the NRA. And of course, a lot of that, a lot of those funds are generated in order to pay for youth safety firearms. So I, I like anything that can get our kids outdoors more. And so I guess a couple of questions. Number one, you work directly for the Department of Wildlife? Is that right? Okay. And so you're outdoor connection coordinator. So my question is, is that I know that you have free licensing for kids up to the age of 12. Is that right?
Not quite, actually. Bobby Jones, for the record, we don't issue licenses to anyone until they are 12. So it's free for them to do the activity, but without the licensure.
Okay. So is that statute driven, or is that, is that policy driven by the department?
Thank you for the question. More or less, everything when it comes to licensing fees, all those are legislative changes. So we actually built this program in a way that we didn't have to go to the legislature. We didn't change any of our license structure. We simply took essentially the pot of money that is paying for the license rather being the individual is the donated funds.
I guess my question is, could you not extend, and would that be a statute that would have to be changed to, to extend no licensing required up to the age of 18? Because it seems to me like that would solve this problem really, really quick, is that if you had, you know, when, when an individual becomes an adult, then they need to get a, get a license, just like a driver's license, right? Although that's a little bit younger, right? But you know what I'm saying? So.
Commissioner Gardner, thank you. Yes, we actually investigated that as an idea, as a proxy for what this would do. The kind of backslide on that is that there's, there's, it's twofold. You mentioned the federal funding and how that gets allocated. So one of the reasons or one of the pieces of math that goes behind the allocation to the state of Nevada for federal excise taxes is based on license totals. So if we made it so that no one under the age of 18 would require a license, we would lose that many licenses that, there's quite a bit of money that comes along with that. So that's one piece. The second is just the money that is paid for, for the license. At least in these terms, we're still able to match that. And unfortunately, conservation isn't getting any cheaper. But we did absolutely investigate that. And yes, it would be a legislative change to make that change.
So I know that everything in statute is, is demographics driven, okay? Counties under 100,000, counties over 100,000. And yet, you're asking all 17 counties to contribute the same amount of money when, when the demographics don't demonstrate that, okay? When you have a much larger population in Washington, Washoe, and in Clark County. So I'm not sure why I understand the ask here is 15,000, and in Clark County is 15,000. And I would also indicate that, I don't know whether it's good or bad, but each commissioner, as I understand it, in Clark County has discretionary funds available where we don't, as, as individual commissioners. So that's, you know, so you're looking to raise 250, 55,000. And what would be, what would be the loss in revenue to the state between the age, age of 12 and 18? If, if they were to change that and allow non-licensing up to the age of 18?
Commissioner Gardner, let me go back just a second to the first thing that you said. And it would have been better in hindsight to take more of a proportional, a proportional approach to the counties and make that ask. The request was actually made, though, that we saw counties as a better partner than some of the private sector groups that we could go reach out to for donations, although we've, we've also looked at that as just a better partnership of public service, if you will. And, but yes, the proportional, not taking that into account may have been an issue. The other, the counter would be that more people value these activities in the rural counties, and that there's more driven to rural counties for hunting and fishing in these activities, these outdoor activities than they would be to, say, Las Vegas, depending how you want to slice that. The other piece is, is so it's $16 per license. That would be the on paper number, but that doesn't count the license certifications. And I would have to go back and find out what those are valued at. And then the three to one match on the dollars that come in for a license.
Okay. Well, once again, I, I support your program. I just, I, you know.
Sure.
I just had some questions that constituents were asking. Thank you.
For sure. And Bobby Jones, for the record, in, in any case, even if Douglas County doesn't want to support this, we're going to keep continuing forward with the program and looking for funding. 40% of the kids that got a license in Douglas County got it for free last year, and we're not gonna, you know, we're going to continue moving forward with trying to grow the program. It's just, this is one of the tools that we built essentially out of nothing to try and curb this. And in the long game, we're at least hoping that building a better base, a foundation of more kids outside puts us in a better place in the future.
Thank you. Are there other questions? I will note that this is for discussion only, and that any action we would take on this would be during the budget action upcoming. All right. Commissioner Togler.
You know, we have, our fishing derby is coming back. And so if you're familiar with those guys, that would be definitely our leaders, where they're actually collecting poles and, and gear and tackle and everything. So that might be another avenue for you to reach out to those guys and, and get the word out. We have a lot of local fishing areas. The ponds, like you said, Mitch Pond is highly used. Bailey Pond, which I think is just over the line to the C word. And then the Martin Slough, there's tons of fishing opportunities in there. So we do have a lot of, like you're saying, local, getting the kids out there in this area. So I understand what you're saying, like, we have more opportunity for fishing here. So it would be more kids actually participating in the program than there might be down in the middle of Reno or Vegas. So that does make sense to a point. But, but yeah, but I would definitely reach out to our fishing derby guys. They do a lot of great work. And their biggest expense is the fish. So maybe they could, we could work a deal.
Thank you.
I love the way you think. That's great. Any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
Turning to agenda item three, for possible action, discussion to adopt ordinance 2025-1652, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 2013-1388, which adopted a development agreement with Mica Drive LLC, and ordinance number 2016-1462, which approved the First Amendment to that development agreement, given the fact that all obligations under the development agreement by all parties thereto have been met. The project associated with the development agreement is known as The Cottages, which is located southwest and southeast of the Mica Drive and Vista Grande Boulevard intersection within the Indian Hills-Jack's Valley Community Plan. Second reading, Andrea Pauling, Deputy Community Development Director, is here to present, darn it, it was a race, and I was trying to get done before you. No. Thank you. Glad you're here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Andrea Pauling, Deputy Director from Community Development. I told you guys on February 20th at the first reading that I'll be back, and here I am. I'm back. So this will be the second reading. I'll go through a little bit. I won't read into record the development agreements and definition and what they are. I think I've done that plenty in the 24 month reviews that I come back every year for. So you guys know what that is. And you already read this, Chairwoman Hales, so I won't also bore you with this. But I'm going to get into the nuts and bolts, a little discussion and background about this, about this repeal. So this is a development agreement that went into effect back in 2013. But the actual planned development and tentative subdivision map for the cottages at Indian Hills was approved in July of 2005. So it allowed for a creation of 48 single-family lots, residential lots. The project is located at the, at Vista Grande Boulevard in Mica Drive in Indian Hills, which is the Jack's Valley Community Plan area. The plan, and I have a map of that, so you guys can see what that looks like. Phase one map, creating 24 of those single-family lots were recorded in June of 2009. I know what many of you were probably thinking in your head, that this has been around for a very long time. And I get that every time I come here with development agreements. And yes, it's been around for a very long time. But we're coming to repeal it today because it's completed. So yay. The owner and the county initially entered in a development agreement in 2013, just to extend the time to complete the remaining phase one improvements and to extend the time to record phase two A and two B final maps. The applicant could not meet the deadline under the original agreement. So there was a First Amendment to this agreement in 2016 that extended the phasing plan, required phase one site improvement permit, and onsite improvements to be submitted to us by July of 2016, and the improvements to be secured or constructed by July of 2017. The deadline was met, and at that time, the final map for phase two A and two B has been created. There is more information in your packet regarding all of these. All homes to date have been constructed, and the required street light that was holding this up for a couple of years has been installed at the corner of Mica Drive and Vista Grande Boulevard. Just to throw in there, it did take some time to get that street light up, but it is up, and you'll see a picture of it. So this is the cottages at Indian Hills. GIS, our team at GIS is amazing. Every time I ask them for a great layout, this is what they send me. And it really shows you the 48 resident, single-family residential lots, 24 on each side of Vista Grande there. And the corner, right here is where the street light is at at this present time. And there's that street light. And there's the cottages at Indian Hills. I took this at sunset, so it was kind of pretty. All right. So conclusion and recommendation, based on the foregoing considerations, staff does recommend that we repeal the adopted development agreement and its First Amendment. And at this point, everything of that development agreement has been completed, and all the requirements have been met. And? Any questions?
Yeah, for the, I'd like to make a disclosure that I did participate in. Yeah, for the, uh, I'd like to make a disclosure that I did participate in the design of some of those homes that were in that development. However, I don't believe that that has any bearing on the approval or denial of this repeal. And this is made for the state of purpose of transparency.
Any questions? All right. This is a-
Just, just an observation. It's, it's good to see that this one is not taking 30 years to complete.
Not quite, sir.
Yeah.
Not quite.
It's nice to finally get some, some of these closed up. Yeah.
We appreciate your good work moving this through. Is there any public comment on this item?
Good afternoon. Ellie Waller, I support this wholeheartedly. I drive this street to go to Roy's. Um, so it's my backyard. I'm appreciative of how this has unfolded. Uh, the street light, of course, is essential for drivers at night, too. Um, so, and I appreciate, uh, Commissioner Tolbert's transparency with a disclosure that didn't have to happen, but, um, would like to see more of that. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment, bring it back to the board. Commissioner Gardner.
I would like to make one other, uh, observation, and then that is that on that street light, um, we do have an ordinance, I believe, or a part of our design standards or something in Title 20 in regards to light, uh, pollution mitigating lights. So I, I think that's important. I get questions all the time from, from members of the public. Do we have that type of ordinance in place? And yes, yes, we do, right? So I'd like confirmation on that.
Yes, we do.
So this, so this one includes that. So, yep. Yep.
All right. Is there a motion?
Uh, in, in that regard, I move for the, uh, adoption of ordinance 2025-1652, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 2013-1388 as presented.
It's been moved by Commissioner Gardner, seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Pauling.
Is that enough of a motion, Mr. Ritchie? Okay. I just, sometimes we don't get all the details in there right.
We will move to agenda item four for possible action, discussion to approve a new full-time equivalent position for Director of Indigent Defense at pay grade 305, replacing the professional services contract for the program coordinator of Douglas County's Indigent Defense Services Program. For this, we have Wendy Lang, Assistant County Manager.
Thank you very much, Chairwoman Hales, members of the commission. If you're going to turn it into a race chairwoman, we can write the titles longer. Wendy Lang, for the record, Assistant County Manager. I am here today to speak with you about our indigent defense program at Douglas County. Uh, just a very brief recap, we have, um, in recent years, seen a lot of changes to the indigent defense and the way that the state of Nevada handles that. The state has established a Department of Indigent Defense Office and forwarded a lot of regulations and best practices for each of the counties to follow. The impact of that has been the oversight and management of indigent defense in Douglas County through the county manager's office, through all of you. And today, I'm before you to talk about making a change in the way that that is structured. The way that Douglas County approached this was primarily through professional services contracts for legal services, including the oversight and coordination of our program. After some time, we believe, staff believes and is recommending to you, the, um, creation of a position for that function so that that position and the program can best be overseen and managed by an internal employee who can facilitate effectively the coordination of the program, the directives of you all establishing and carrying forward the budget, the professional services contracts for the services that are provided, and of course, coordination with the courts and the state as well. Um, so the item before you today is to consider bringing that position in-house in order to provide a more effective service. And I just want to highlight that any costs related to this are currently reimbursable or paid by the State of Nevada Department of Indigent Defense Program. So this would not have a direct impact on the county's budget. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
I see no questions. Let's go to public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Mr. Gibson.
Check, check. Thank you, Chair. Assemblymember Jason Gibson, post-political prisoner, Douglas County. The need to, um, uh, consider this particular agenda item has everything to do with the mismanagement of the indigent defense services in Douglas County. It was in June of last year, Chair, that you put on the record through astute observation that the county was being billed $1,700 an hour by indigent defense service contractors and that there was no accounting system, no accountability for their billable hours whatsoever. You recall that? I was awake. So, um, when you're billing $1,700 an hour as a defense contractor, you're advocating for the prosecutor. You're doing whatever you are told because you're billing at 1,700, or, yeah, 1,700 an hour. That's outrageous, isn't it? I can't even believe I have to really register that. $1,700 an hour these defense contractors are being paid to mischaracterize, misrepresent and ambush their clients. These documents here that are going on the record today show how Martin Hart ambushed me, how Jevston Klausert ambushed me, how Mary Brown ambushed me, how Brian Filter ambushed me, show how Maximilian ambushed his client, how they routinely misrepresent and malpractice our best interests. This document here will convey the detail behind what we learned by being incarcerated in your JALEX so-called Justice Center, when we learned that Martin Hart committed suicide after we found out about that fraud at $1,700 an hour. And it was covered up by Judge Nathan Todd Young in the district court claiming that Martin Hart was such a swell guy, they put him in the paper as an upstanding individual, a real officer of the peace. He committed suicide. They should drop all of his casework. They should, they should free us from all of the misrepresentation from that individual and from all of those individuals.
Please keep your comments restricted to things that we have anything to do about.
Well, you have everything to do with it because of your employees.
Yes, talk to us about indigent defense.
They are your employees. They are your responsibility.
Yeah, but that-
The entire department-
This is an agenda item about a program coordinator, a full-time equivalent position, uh, for Director of Indigent Defense.
The director needs to start with a full-blown audit and, and come to terms with the fact that you are systematically engineering people into a 96% conviction rate without due process, without constitutional rights to competent counsel. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? With that, I will close public comment and bring it back for a motion or further discussion.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the commission, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager, for the record. I think it's important for those who are following along, um, maybe from the comfort of their home regarding our indigent defense program. I'm, I'm very proud of the performance of our indigent defense program. Uh, the statements made today in public comment are not correct. Um, we would be happy to share, uh, some reporting information to this county commission regarding the actual hours billed, uh, the total average charge, but it's nowhere near $1,700 an hour, as was stated on the record. Um, I can understand why there might be some concern and so we can do a better job in some reporting out and that further, um, demonstrates, uh, why it's 100% appropriate for us to look at filling this position full-time and to regularly report this information back to this county commission.
I'll follow up on that. When I made that comment, my concern lied, lied more with, we aren't getting the reporting that we should have, rather than a suspicion that anyone was actually billing that amount. And we needed to, it, it's appropriate for us to see documentation for the, the amounts that are being billed. All right. Commissioner Tarkanian.
I'll make a motion to approve a new full-time equivalent position for Director of Indigent Defense at a pay grade 305 as presented, replacing the professional services contract for the program coordinator, Douglas County's Indigent Defense Services Program.
Second. Been moved by Commissioner Tarkanian, seconded by Commissioner Tolbert, that we approve this position. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Agenda item five. Thank you. For possible action, discussion regarding the possible appointment of an additional Douglas County Commissioner to the Board of Directors of the Nevada Association of Counties. Vice Chairman Mark Gardner.
Thank you. I'll do that presentation from here. I, I hope that's okay. Um, so anyways, what inspired this particular emotion or this agenda item is that, um, the Nevada Association of Counties has available to it two positions on the National Association of Counties Board of Directors, uh, if all counties participate, uh, at the state level. And that's the case with Nevada. So we're allowed a position, uh, to represent the urban counties, uh, and that is currently being fulfilled by Commissioner Marilyn Capatrick out of Clark County. Um, the rural position was previously being filled by Commissioner Varlin Higby, um, in Lincoln County. However, uh, that, uh, position became vacant as of January 1st, uh, when he was unsuccessful in, uh, his reelection bid. So anyways, in, in doing so, in February, the Nevada Association of Counties had that, uh, the, an additional position to fill on the National Board of Directors. And, um, I was selected and elected to serve in that capacity as the rural county representative at the National Association of Counties Board of Directors. Uh, the bylaws of the Nevada Association of Counties then provides those counties who have those representatives to appoint an additional representative to serve on the Nevada Association of County Board of Directors. Um, that requirement is, is, we have a monthly meeting on the last, generally on the last Friday of the month from 9:30 to approximately noon, uh, in Carson City. And so, um, that's the purpose of this particular, um, uh, appointment available to us, uh, that we have the ability, uh, because of my serving now, uh, as, uh, the rural counties appointment to the National Association of Counties Board of Directors, uh, we have the additional, uh, a, a Board of Director position available to us at the state level. So that's the background.
Thank you. Shall we start by asking of interest? Is there interest?
I would have interest.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment and ask for a motion.
Well, then I will make them, uh, I will move that we appoint Mr. Commissioner Nathan Tolbert to serve, um, as our additional Douglas County Commissioner Representative on the Nevada Association of Counties Board of Directors.
Been moved by Commissioner Gardner and seconded by Commissioner Rice, that we appoint Commissioner Tolbert. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. All right. Agenda item six for possible action, discussion and direction to staff regarding legislative or legislative issues proposed by legislators or other entities permitted to submit bill draft requests that may impact Douglas County. The board may take action to support or oppose any legislative item included in the Douglas County Bill Tracker Report included with the board packet. Jennifer Davidson, County Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for dragging out my introduction, so I might have a moment to confirm colleague, Assistant County Manager Wendy Lang. Uh, it continues to be a busy time at the state legislature. Um, we, at this time, do not have any specific bills that we, uh, would like to bring to your attention for direction. Um, do just want to give you a couple of updates regarding some recent activities, um, by myself and also Assistant County Manager Wendy Lang, um, representing, uh, with Director of China Spring Youth Camp, Jessica Stocking, uh, some activities there. Um, I did recently give a presentation, uh, to the Senate Committee, Government Affairs Committee. I was invited to do so, uh, by Senator, the Chair of that committee, Flores. Um, I think that presentation went well. Uh, I'm a little biased because it was my presentation, but, um, Commissioner, uh, Gardner did also attend and he can give you, share with you his thoughts. I view it as an opportunity to share, uh, the important work that this county commission is undertaking, um, provide an overview of our demographics in our county, give general information on, um, our organization, our overall operating budget and the challenges we are facing and the important priorities, um, vision and objectives that this, uh, county commission have adopted. Um, I, we received good feedback from the committee, um, questions specifically on China Spring. Um, I'm pleased to hear that senators are tracking that funding for the China Spring program, um, is a significant concern for Douglas County. And that is due in large part, uh, to the work of the boots on the ground of the individuals that I mentioned earlier in my report. If the commission has, uh, no specific questions for me at this time, I'll turn it over, uh, to Assistant County Manager Wendy Lang to just speak with you briefly regarding her specific activities relative to China Spring.
Thank you very much, Jennifer, Chairwoman and members of the commission, Wendy Lang, for the record. So I appreciate the opportunity to share with you a brief update regarding efforts to, um, advocate for budget increases for the China Spring Youth Camp. China Spring Youth Camp budget is set within the state budget. It is a line item specifically within Department of Health and Human Services. Yesterday, we were able, myself and Jessica Stocking, were able to go to the legislature where the committee heard the budget for that, um, department. And we were pleased to hear a number of helpful questions and have the opportunity to provide some insight to the members of that joint committee, um, yesterday when they were hearing the budget. I think that they have a lot of genuine interest in understanding that budget. Just to give you all in the public just a very brief overview on the history of that, um, the budget allocation in the state budget has been, for at least a decade, $3.8 million. And that budget allocation is covered, um, currently 44% by the state. And actually, the state allocates 56% of that to the 16 counties who participate in China Spring Youth Camp. Um, so each of those counties pays a portion, including Douglas County, to operate China Spring Youth Camp. That $3.8 million figure, as I said, has not increased in over a decade. And so what we are looking to do is try to find ways to make the funding sustainable to keep up with the cost of operating that facility in an effective way. Uh, appreciate very much Chairwoman Hales' involvement. She is your representative on the advisory committee for the camp. Um, and the various members of that committee, as well as the chiefs of juvenile probation throughout the state that we serve, have been very helpful and engaging. Uh, we appreciate any sort of, uh, support or advocacy for making a sustainable budget for this very essential need throughout the state of Nevada. And I'm pleased to report that staff has been working very hard to, to accomplish that and I'm, I'm hopeful at this point. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
I don't see any questions. Are there any questions? Commissioner Rice.
Actually, I don't have any questions. I just have, uh, a comment. Some of the, I, I belong to a group that follows many of these, uh, bills that are, uh, have been introduced. We are in trouble, folks. Clark County is, uh, not exactly rural-friendly, in my opinion, and that's just an opinion. And, uh, we need to be diligent in looking at some of these bills. And, uh, we need to follow them very closely because some of them can have a very negative impact on our county. And, uh, and thank you for what you, what you are doing. Thank you.
Commissioner Gardner.
Thank you. Um, I know we can't talk necessarily about, because, uh, we didn't identify any bills on this particular, uh, agenda, so we can't necessarily talk specifically to those bills. Um, I know that we have, uh, and she does a great job, uh, a legislative lobbyist, uh, Ms. Lindsey Knox of McDonough Cora- Lindsey Knox of McDonough, Carolina, and from what I understand, she's doing an excellent job on our behalf. I do have a number of bills that I would like us to take a look at, so maybe you can write these down, and, but only upon coordination and concurrence by our legislative lobbyist would I want to bring these forward for us to take a position on, okay? I think she has a better heartbeat, or finger on the heartbeat of, and some of these may die, maybe they, maybe I'm seeing something that shouldn't be done, or, you know, so anyways, I'm gonna, I'm gonna list them if you don't mind. SB 21, and I don't know the specifics on, I'm not gonna go into the specifics on these. SB 69, I know is being brought forward by Story County and them. AB 51, I think is something we need to take a look at in regards to possibly supporting. AB 120 is something I think we may want to look at supporting. AB 127, I'm sorry, am I going too fast? I don't, okay. AB 152 is something that Assemblyman Ken Gray has asked for our support on, and it's regarding records retention and not having to provide anything beyond the seven years or whatever our policy is in regards to records retention. So I'd like us to take a look at that one. AB 363, which is establishment of a, the state engineer, water engineer, in regards to the establishment of local groundwater boards, so I think that's important for us to take a look at. SB 55 is another one. One that I think that we might want to take a look at, especially since Nevada has so many federal lands, but Senate Joint Resolution, so SJR 4, which is Natural Resources Commission, urges the feds to coordinate with local entities on the use of federal lands, so I think that's important for us to take a look at and possibly support. And I'm gonna suggest also, it's interesting, I got a call from the Director of Conservation and Natural Resources last week, but previous Senator Settlemeyer suggested that we take a look and strongly oppose Senate Bill 324, which would, to my understanding, prohibit the sale of single-use water bottles below four liters of anybody that's drawing water out of the Tahoe Basin. So that certainly affects ourselves, Lyon County, Carson City, and believe it or not, Story County gets the majority of their water out of that. So anyways, I think we should take a look at that, but once again, I'd ask us to make sure we have concurrence from, because we don't want to harm ourselves on any of this as well, right? Or make mistakes in that regard. But that's, that's what I have, and I'll mention, I'll talk about your presentation during my comments at the end of the meeting, as appropriate, because it doesn't include this agenda item, so.
Is there any other comment? All right. This is for possible action, so we will ask for public comment. Ms. Waller.
Thank you, Ms. Davidson, for your presentation. Thank you for your comments up there. I have attended four sessions, two Assembly and two Senate, as related to the environmental improvement program funding request by the TRPA. Once, I'm assuming that this is approved, I don't see that we, Douglas County, do enough to ask for resources from that improvement program to help ourselves. Part of going to the KAG Kingsbury General Improvement Meeting was to listen to the Megyn Kelly Project, the Complete Streets. The KGID did not accept the offer. I won't go into all those details, and we know that we will be on the agenda March 26th at the TRPA Governing Board for the $200,000 of the funds to be released to Douglas County. So I am following that. I just want to be very clear when we talk about taking water from Lake Tahoe. Marlet Lake is in the Tahoe Basin. No water from Lake Tahoe can go off the mountain. We all need to be clear when we make statements about that, and I appreciate Ms. Commissioner Gardner following that resolution, or whatever it's going to be. I happened to run into Ms. Knox when I was at one of my attendances and was very glad to have a nice conversation with her. I'm appreciative of her expertise. I have not seen ACR 5 come forward yet. This one will damage Douglas County if we have to produce 7 million. It goes back to the proportionality when this, if it ever comes through, for transportation efforts up in Lake Tahoe. So I appreciate Commissioner Rice by bringing up that we need to look at bills that are going to hurt us, and that one certainly will. I will let you know during the interim session, during the Senate Oversight Committee for the, for Lake Tahoe and Marlet Lake, that Senator Titus actually rallied all the Republicans to say no against ACR 5. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public, other public comments? I will close public comment, and I don't believe we have any action to take at this time. So we'll move to Agenda Item 7, for presentation only. Announcements, reports, updates from county commission members, including updates on the various boards and/or commissions that they may be a member of or liaisons to, or any other meetings, functions they have attended, and any request by a commissioner for discussion of a future agenda item. Looking at you, Commissioner Tolbert.
Lots of activities since I got back, but nothing specific to report. Yeah, I think that's it.
Okay.
Oh, actually, I do, supposed to open the, I'm asking for help here, maybe. I am supposed to do the welcome address tomorrow for the Cooperative Extensions Beekeeping Conference, two-day or so. Anything that we specifically haven't welcomed people to the Carson Valley before on a large scale, so any help there would be appreciated.
So I had two committee meetings. One was with the Conservation District, and it dealt with Kell Drive, which I thought is important for our community, and it's been one delay after another, but it looks like it's finally moving forward. There was a huge budget deficit from the delays, and I was afraid, I wasn't afraid, but there was, there was talk of them having to come back and get more money from the county, but, oh my goodness, I'm running a blank with her name. She does such a great job. She went out and she got some, some additional grants, and the county's not gonna have to put any more money in, and they're ready to move forward with Kell Drive, which I think is just wonderful.
Megyn Kelly.
It is Megyn Kelly, and you know, she's my favorite people. This is, this is just pure old age.
Commissioner Rice.
Welcome to the old timers club. Okay, I attended a TDVA meeting, a Tahoe Douglas Visitor Authority meeting, the Lake Tahoe, Lake Tahoe Visitors Authority, as well as a Douglas County Lake Tahoe Sewer Authority meeting, and I'm not gonna make any jokes about the sewer authority, however, just to let you know, the budget has been, gone over again, and they are sitting in a very good position financially, and, and yes, we do export our, our...
It goes downhill.
It, it does go downhill.
Goes downhill from here.
However, by the time it gets down here, it's drinkable.
Oh, boy.
I'm not about to do it, but they, they tell me that it's portable. No, I brought my own, and you gotta have a little fun, folks. Anyway, that's my report.
Commissioner Gardner.
Thank you, Ms.
Top that.
I can't top that. No way. I, I don't know how I can, anyways, get serious here again for a minute. Anyways, as, as our county manager indicated, she was requested, invited to do a presentation to the Senate Governmental Affairs Committee last Wednesday, as was our sheriff as well, Sheriff Coverley, and, and so I commend her and Sheriff Coverley on the jobs they did presenting. One of the questions that was asked by, and I, I can't remember whether it was Senator Flores or, or Senator Orangehall, I, my recollection was Senator Orangehall, but asked us about our community relations and our, with the Washo Tribe, and, and how the, how we were moving along with that. And I just want the public to know that that's, that's been a big focus of mine, is trying to build a relationship and nurture a relationship with the Washo Tribe here in, in Douglas County. And to that end, Commissioner Hale's and I both had lunch with Chairman Smokey on last Monday, this last Monday, and spent a little over two hours having lunch, and the restaurant was not slow, by the way, it was with that, so they, they did it quickly. But anyways, I, I think we are nurturing that relationship, and certainly, open dialogue is, is always good, and we're also, you know, they're, they will be conveyed about 25, 2600 acres should, once this Douglas County lands bill gets through Congress, hopefully through reconciliation, but I specifically asked a question of Chairman Smokey. I said, "Do you feel like our relationship is getting better?", and he responded, "Yes", so that's good, and we agreed to meet on a more often basis than, than once a year. I think it's been about a year before we had done that again, but we're, we're gonna get together at least every six months, hopefully, and maybe, maybe quarterly, to just sit down and chat about common interests, so what we're doing and what they're doing. So anyways, that was, I thought that was very fruitful, and I enjoyed that, that time, and I thank Commissioner Hale for enjoining us with that. So anyways, I, that's all I have for today.
Thank you. I'll just mention a couple of things. The China Spring Youth Council Advisory Board meets monthly now with the legislature in session, just to make sure all communication is with everyone and we're united effort, and I appreciate Jessica Stocking's work on that, as well as Wendy Lang. I attended events sponsored by the Business Council and the Chamber, the Carson Valley Chamber. At that event, the Secretary of State spoke, and that was good to make a connection there. I will note that there are meetings tomorrow with the South Shore Transportation Management Association, and they are gearing up, giving a lot of time and attention to what they might present as a budget request in our upcoming meetings. And that, that concludes my part of Agenda Item 7. I mean, 6. Turning to Agenda, yeah, 7. Then we are now at closing public comment, but before we go, open to all of the public, I would like to invite our Chief Operating Officer, Kathy Lewis, to come share some really good news, and I will note for the record that she has a big smile, because there's a big milestone reached.
A really big milestone. Thank you, Kathy Lewis, for the record, Chief Operating Officer. On Tuesday, we sold the bonds for the Justice Center. It's, it's a little bit like closing the house. We sold the bonds, they made an offer, made an earnest payment, but it'll be probably in the middle of April before we have the closing papers and have the money in the bank for it. But I wanted to give an update. I will say the market has been up and down, and it reminds me that I am an accountant, not, I cannot do anything with stocks full-time. My heart has been going up and down too much, but just a quick update, so we sold, are the two issues. The first series, we sold, the amount was $34,545,000, and was sold to RW Bard for an effective rate of 4.46. There were three bids that were submitted on that, and they were the best bid for, for that one. And then the second series was $14 million, and the effective rate on that, we sold it to Jeffries. The effective rate was 3.2%, and they were the best of five bids. So great, you're right, a big milestone in the, in the construction of the Justice Center. Thank you.
Thank you for carrying that stress on behalf of, of all of us, and for coming to give this report. Good work. Thank you very much. All right. Now we will open to all public comment on matters within our jurisdiction, but not listed on the agenda today. Mr. Gibson.
Thank you, Chair. Assemblymembers, Jason Gibson, post-political prisoner, Board of County Commissioner, District One, candidate for Gardenville Ranchos. With regards to the most recent comment about these bonds, the board has intentionally, knowingly, and willingly failed to disclose the cost of those bonds, the interest on those bonds, which will likely double the project. That project will be the highest capital investment in the history of Douglas County, and will deliver a crushing blow to the social fabric of our community. To give you an example of how they engineer crime at the Justice Law Enforcement Center, I was falsely arrested on November 20, or was falsely arrested at the community center.
Mr. Gibson, please keep your remarks to things that are within our control.
I'm talking in closing comment about the 911 call that was placed that had me falsely arrested for assault and battery on January 20th by your people.
That's not in our control.
This is in your jurisdiction.
That's the sheriff's department.
Says right here that this county receives up to 65 911 false flag calls a day, and this was through the astute awareness of Commissioner Gardner, who put on the record that the county doesn't realize that we receive almost 500 calls per week for 911 services, and most of those calls, if we did an audit, would be bogus calls. They're falsified calls that inflate your budgets, that inflate the salaries, and that are used to incarcerate innocent people like me. Now, what I'm putting on the record today is how I was arrested by undersheriff's wife, Melissa Elges, during this board meeting on November 21st. She accused me here in the assembly of threatening to hunt her down and to harm her, and that's a lie. What happened is that Kurt Hildebrandt was nearly assaulted by a member of the public. Commissioner Rice shut the meeting down. We exited the chamber, and what happened outside of the chamber was about a half a dozen people who were arguing with Kurt Hildebrandt, and she roped me into the circumstance and blamed it on me. Now, what's in this documentation shows Melissa Elges, right here, on her Facebook, portraying herself as a domestic violence advocate.
That has nothing to do with the jurisdiction of this body, so please, please...
This is all within the juris...
Please keep your remarks on things that have to do with our jurisdiction. Arrests are not within our jurisdiction.
Destroy my time. These are your employees, are your responsibility.
No, they are not. The sheriff is not. That is not.
You, you have a social contract to uphold the Constitution, which gives us a peaceful assembly by which we can show up to vet our grievances and to represent the will of the people, and that is what this assembly is for.
No, you know, your, your time is up, and we've spent some of it talking.
You have stolen my time, you have stolen my time once again, and you continue to...
That... Ms. Waller.
Ellie Waller, thank you again for the opportunity to speak on many issues. I didn't get to complete my opening public comment. I and many of the community members are not against a state-of-the-art hospital. Follow the local jurisdictions codes compatible with adjacency to a neighborhood and public health and safety, or possibly stay in California and figure out how to retrofit and meet the needs there. It's about the location and the people. I'm a little all over the place on my next comment. I just want to remind this board...
I just want to remind this board that Senator Flores smacked Douglas County up the side of the head with a letter that was generated by a group in Tahoe and a member of the Tahoe Chamber. Just be reminded of that. Next, I'll go to the Tahoe Douglas Visitors Authority presentation. I wish it was in action. I don't know, I'm hoping when they come back, the public will have an opportunity to make statements about their statements. On March 12th, 2025, I did not attend the TDVA meeting. I attend way too many as it is. With that, that agenda, which I will turn in as part of the record, states possible action, December 2024 financials, preliminary January 2025 financial statements, 2026 budget assumptions, Tahoe Blue Event Center settlement agreement, recommendations for the future. I did thank Kevin on his way out. He's done an excellent job as their operator, but today's presentation did not meet the criteria of what I thought the Tahoe Douglas Visitors Authority should have been presenting today along those lines. This information was available on March 12th. I'm glad they're going to be coming back. I, again, would like to see more information along the lines of what you discussed today, which preempts why I, again, think we should have had public comment on this issue. All the information was there that I suggested. Now I'll switch to upcoming budget meetings. Microtransit was part of the TDVA discussion and in my written comments to you, Douglas County should not be providing any contributions for microtransit until the casinos, heavenly, et cetera, do their fair share. The TDVA has benefited them and we see nothing. We have seen nothing since the opening. What does that tell you? I appreciate that we start looking into that. I'm not sure I'm going to attend the South Shore Management Meeting tomorrow, but I certainly listen to the meetings after the fact and I want to thank everybody during budget meetings. I know they're difficult and I will end my time with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment and this meeting is adjourned.